Yes.
Okay, good afternoon. The meeting is called at 6:23. And I'll ask our Vice Mayor for the pledge of allegiance.
Please stand.
It's okay, it's okay.
It's okay, you can stay down, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and endless. Thank you.
Roll call, please. Yvonne, roll call.
Yvonne, can you hear me?
Yes. Ready for roll call?
Yes.
Mayor Cruz?
Here.
Vice Mayor Lance?
Present.
Councilmember Bagby?
Present.
Councilmember Paula?
Here.
Councilmember Walt- Walter?
Here.
We put our closed session, hold set.
Thanks, Mayor. The council did take an item up on closed session today. Staff was given direction, no reportable action was taken.
Thank you. Conflict of interest. I do have to recuse myself from the discussion on one item on the American Rescue Act.
And Mayor, just for the record, that will be on a portion of that item dealing with with potential improvements to a property next to your home. It won't be on all of the items, so what we'll do is we'll segment the item by handling that piece of the larger item first. That way you could rejoin the conversation and the discussion.
Thank you.
Can you all please repeat which item that is? There's a conflict? I couldn't quite hear.
G1. Allocation, suggestion of allocations for Alexander Valley Health. I have to recuse myself from that discussion. Given that is a thousand feet within my home. Any other declarations of conflict of interest? None? So, we'll go on. Thank you, Yvonne. Agenda review. Regular session changes and/or deletions.
Mayor, regarding item D2, the small cell ordinance, there's a corrected version of the ordinance on the dais in front of you.
And is this one, we pull an item also? No? Okay, alright. So, anything else on changes and/or deletions? You got that, Yvonne, D2?
No, I couldn't hear.
Kevin, could you repeat for her?
Item D2, there's a corrected ordinance on the dais.
It's a correction.
Got it.
Now, public comments. Any person wishing to speak to the city council on any item not listed on the agenda may do so at this time. Members of the public have the right to speak on any items on the council agenda during that item. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda. So, do we have any members of the public that have any comments? Do we have any hands, Yvonne?
I don't see any hands on the virtual meeting.
Okay. Thank you very much. Do we have any proclamations or presentations, David?
Mayor, no proclamations or presentations.
Okay, thank you. And then we'll go ahead and go to item four, consent calendar. Yes? D5?
D5.
Okay. We're pulling item D5. It's Councilmember Walter's request. Any other?
Madam Mayor, I would like to pull D6 and D8. D6 and D8, Yvonne.
Okay, and who's pulling that one?
Lance.
Vice Mayor Lance.
Thank you.
Very well.
Six, eight.
And so, should we discuss those first before consent, or should we vote?
It is, it's up to you, Mayor, but one way to do it is just vote on the rest of the items, get those out of the way, and then handle these individually.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move the consent counter. Mine is there, I was in the poll.
And I'll second.
Thank you. That was Councilmember Bagby, second by Vice Mayor Lance. Yeah, she's coming.
Yvonne, we need a roll call vote for the adoption.
Okay, so this is to approve the consent calendar, the remainder of the consent calendar. Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lance?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Councilmember Walters?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so, let's go ahead and open up discussion for D5.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I pulled the item with the item with the professional services agreement with West Yoast Associates. And basically, I just had a couple of questions. Kevin, you and I chatted about this a little bit, but I'm not seeing in that an exit strategy. And I guess where I'm going with that is we're continuing to advertise for it, City Engineer, Public Works Director. If we should be fortunate enough to find one two or three months into this eight-month contract, is there an exit clause without a minimum payment? That's one. And then number two, non-use. It's 15 hours per week. But what happens if we sit there for a week without using the services that we charge a flat fee? And then my observation is, this is a lot of money, $175,000 for an eight-month contract that limits us to 15 hours a week. I mean, I don't think we paid our city engineer that total amount. I understand that it's being covered out of the savings of what we're not paying for an in-house engineer, but I don't know. I'd like the two questions answered first, if you can, please.
Absolutely. Happy to address your question, Councilmember Walter, and I think it's a very good question in regards to the scope of work. First and foremost, the scope of work is time and materials basis, so there's no guarantee that the scope has to be fully realized. It's based on, you know, the request by staff, you know, determining in terms of the number of hours that would be required per week. What the commitment is, is for the individual who would serve as the acting city engineer, in this case Vanessa Apadaka, would dedicate up to 15 hours per week, plus the, there is built into this contract additional staff time with West Yoast to provide support services that would be at a lesser cost. So, at any time, of course, the city standard professional service agreement does have a termination clause, so we can terminate that if necessary pursuant to the language in the agreement. But because the agreement is based on time and materials, it's at the direction of the city, so if I, as your city manager directed them not to provide any more support services, they would not be obligated to or required to bill us under the agreement. So, that kind of gets to your, I think, question about an exit clause. I think Ms. Apadaka fully understands that if we retain a promoter or hire a city engineer or public works director that, and their services are no longer needed, we would no longer, you know, require their services and request them pursuant to the agreement. The basis for the cost estimate was, you know, to take us through June only because if that's in case it's needed. So, we looked at what our budget was, funding for a city engineer, and this agreement reflects that. And I concur that the cost of providing those services is, you know, quite expensive. I think it's a reflection of what we're seeing in the engineering consulting industry. Our costs for those services are rapidly increasing, and I think it's a reflection of two things, and it all gets back to kind of supply and demand. One is there's really a lack of qualified professional engineers. We find that kind of across the board, and the difficulty in filling vacancies in professional engineering positions. And there's likewise a significant demand for engineering services. I did, just for reference, you know, always want to seek alternative quotes and did approach Coastland, who has served as our city engineer for a number of years, and, you know, they politely declined, in part because of their own workload, their own demands, and because they're serving for acting city engineers for, I think, up to seven cities right now, and they just said they couldn't take on this additional responsibility and duty. So, it comes with a real challenge to find, you know, a qualified individual that can sit in that position, and is a reflection of the industry, I think, for qualified professional engineers.
Well, Mr. Rincon's been gone now, I believe, for about three, if not four, months. What have we been doing in the meantime for engineering services? Do we have a pileup of work waiting to be looked at and signed off?
I'm not sure if I characterize it as a pileup of work. I think a lot of the responsibilities have landed on my desk as your city manager, and I've been diligently working with, you know, many of the staff in the Public Works Department on, you know, addressing a number of issues that, you know, otherwise our city engineer would lead up. I think maybe first and foremost is the effort to respond to the curtailment order that was issued by the State Water Board. That's an effort, and most jurisdictions would be led up, you know, almost entirely by your city engineer and overseeing that process. I've been involved in meetings, a pretty significant number of meetings in time with our water staff, our finance team, our legal team in those meetings. And so, that's just one example of activity that, you know, that I've taken on, amongst others, including, you know, overseeing the operations of the department more closely as part of my responsibilities.
And thank you for that, David. I know it puts a big burden on you when we're missing a city clerk and we're missing a city engineer and other positions within the city. So, just to kind of reiterate, so I make sure I'm clear on this, it's time and material. So, if the individual Vanessa does not come up, or we don't need her services, there's no charge. And our exit strategy is just notifying them that we have an in-house person and their services are no longer needed.
That's absolutely correct, Councilmember Walter. I think you characterize it fairly well.
Yes, Councilmember Bagby, and then Councilmember Paula.
Yeah, I appreciate the questions because we do really have to watch, you know, every penny, and this is just another indication of, you know, a lack of a tax base, and Cloverdale really hampers us from being able to compete for talent. But Vanessa is a known quantity. She contracted with the city of Cloverdale before she was snapped up by West Yoast, and she actually was, is also the executive director, or she's taken the lead on doing the executive director's duties for Russian River Watershed Association as part of West Yoast. So, we're very fortunate to have a young, dynamic, very talented engineer, and I hope that, you know, even if we, when we do hire someone full-time, that we will continue to have a need to use West Yoast's engineering services and those of Vanessa, because she has the previous work here, she's familiar with the watershed, she's able to, and I understood that she's already started sitting in on meetings and giving her time so that she'd be able to be up and running. So, it's a different kind of situation, having to have a contract engineer who is part-time. I think it's absolutely necessary right now, and we were very lucky to be able to get services of somebody Vanessa's quality. So, and only hope that we would be able to hire her away from West Yoast at some point, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't disagree. Vanessa's really a good choice. My concern, and I had a nice conversation with our city manager, was the amount of money, $175,000, for the amount of months being eight, eight and a half months. Recognizing it's not going to be a full-time position, and the part that really caught my attention was the fact that there's only two in-person days, could be more if the need arises. But part of the big responsibility is overseeing and being engaged in the activities of the Public Works Department. And I'm not really clear how that would work well when you're working remotely. To me, our Public Works is small, and we have a lot on the drawing board, and they do need to have the oversight in place like any other major department in the city. And I'm not, I'm just not convinced that that's going to happen here. Our last city engineer was the actual first and last city engineer that we really had as a city engineer. Prior to that, it was only the Public Works Director, and it was a contract out with the city engineering portion. I just think, I don't see a lot of, a lot of the time going to be focused on the Public Works operation part of this, or it's going to be more on the engineering. And I really would have appreciated an opportunity to kind of have more of an in-depth conversation on the options, whether it's a retired, new it, contract with another jurisdiction, to have a little bit more on the Public Works side than the engineering side. And again, not being knowledgeable, certainly a little bit more insight on the information. How much time is actually spent on the engineering part? Because even with the city engineer, we did funnel out quite a bit of the engineering task to other engineering firms, such as Coastland, who's done quite a bit of work for the city. So, it's a lot of unanswered questions. I'm sure it's a good, I think the amount of money coupled with the amount of hours is what triggered my concerns. Maybe, you know, if we're going to move this forward, I've asked that we reduce the amount of money, at least for the first, and they could come back at a later date for additional funding if we're starting to get run low. But it seems that we have a part-time city engineer, Public Works Director coming on with enough money for a full 12-month position. So, it just, it doesn't feel right. So, I don't, I just don't have enough information to feel comfortable with this proposal at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Paula. David, could you explain to us what is, who is in charge of the Public Works at this moment? Is it, are they reporting to Kevin?
Happy to explain that. Your city manager is responsible for overall administration of the entire city, including Public Works and the city engineering function. I'm not a professional engineer, so ultimately rely on professionals to provide that particular expertise. What I've sought to do in response to the vacancy in this position is to work more closely with our senior operators in both our Water Department and our Wastewater Department and our Parks Division, as much as time permits. I see in the audience tonight is our senior water operator Darren Hernandez. I think Darren can attest to how much I'm on the phone call with him more than ever in comparison to maybe when we had the city engineer and they could provide that, fire alarm's going off, provide that, you know, that direct oversight of our Public Works functions. So, many of those functions are really falling to your city engineer, and I'm providing that direct guidance on contracts, on responding to issues, you know, really on a daily basis, and, you know, where there's opportunities for our assistant city manager to participate in, you know, assisting with some of the critical functions, he's doing so. But we're also relying more on staff of those divisions to assist. So, that is, you know, it's really, we have, we're lucky, we have a committed team, and everyone's kind of, you know, has stepped up to commit to, you know, getting the job done. And I want to commend the team for doing that and working with me on that effort. You know, it's really, it's a function of just dedicating, you know, more of my time to that effort. That's what, you know, really what's occurring in this particular instance, not having a, you know, a city engineer to provide that service.
Yes.
I think what it comes down to me is, for me, is that this is a manager's decision as to whether or not this is workable. And I am perfectly comfortable with that eight-month contract. I really see it as that's a realistic length that it's going to take us to, you know, either, things are going to kind of shake out in the wash post-COVID, and we're going to kind of know what the, you know, the employment market is and what we're going to be able to do, we're going to be able to afford. And I think that that's a good timeframe. I also trust the city manager's judgment that this is workable. In addition to that, just being a knowledge worker myself, a tech worker, you know, we live in a different age now. I mean, we are going to, talent is hard to come by, and people need to work remotely, and so much of what an engineer does in their job is they're reviewing plans, they're reviewing projects. And, you know, honestly, that can be done from anywhere. If we contracted with, you know, a Coastland or another city or another company, we'd be in the same position where we wouldn't even know where that engineer was located. They could be located in Kuala Lumpur for all we know. And as long as they can do the job for us and it's workable, and they have a relationship with David and his staff and his, you know, the way that he collaborates, you know, I'm totally willing to support this. I also, I know it's a lot to swallow as far as the cost is concerned, but for a consultant, I don't think, for the length of the contract and the amount of time, I don't think the per-hour rate is, it's not rate outrageous in my world. So, I trust David to make the decision. I also trust him, if it's not working out, that he's going to be able to, you know, shift on a dime and get us, get our engineering needs met. So, I think I have faith in my city manager, and I can move forward on this item.
Yeah, I have one question, David. Is she working as a contractor, or is she working as a part-time employee of the city?
Under the proposed agenda item, Ms. Apadaka would serve as the interim city engineer, but through a consulting relationship under a professional service agreement. And that's pretty consistent with how we've done, filled this position in the past with the interim. We had a contract with Coastland to provide those services. Where it's differentiated is where we've had direct employment agreements. For example, previous to Chief Ferguson coming onboard, we had an employment agreement with an interim police chief, and in that case, it was a direct, a direct employment situation via an employment agreement with that individual. So, in this case, it would be as a consultant.
And it's all of West Yoast and their services, similar to Jose. When we get, we get more than Jose, we also get Myers-Nabe and all of the professional knowledge that his team brings. Like, it's my knowledge, it's my understanding that with Vanessa, we would not just be getting her engineering skills, but the very deep knowledge she has as well. They're complete suite of services.
You're correct, Councilmember Bagby. In the proposal, in addition to the 15 hours a week, there's 22 hours total per month for additional technical and support staff. So, that roughly equates to, you know, 6.5 hours per week approximately. But again, that's flexible and adaptable depending on when that need might arise.
Well, that clarifies, because if it's a consultant, it's always more expensive than an everyday employee.
Madam Mayor, just a follow-up. Just, I don't disagree with any of that was said. I just think we have to be aware we're not getting the Public Works oversight that this is asking for, that is not advised. And I think it's really commendable our city manager takes on that role, that our city manager's got an awful lot on his plate when things can start sliding, and it's just not fair to the team. We need to fill these positions with people that are going on the beat.
Can I make a suggestion? Because I completely, I think I understand where you're coming from, and I think that that eight months is really going to allow us to figure out, are we going to be able to get an engineer, or do we need to contract out our engineering and perhaps hire just a Public Works Director? And I just see this as a great option to buy us some time to figure that out. And I'd be happy to bring, I think we should explore that further. And my only time is right now is going to tell us where we're going to be in the next eight months or so. So, that's why I'm supporting this tonight.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, Councilmember Bagby, I do remember Vanessa working with us and did an excellent job, no complaints. You know, I'm wondering, David, if we can maybe just kind of keep an eye on this expense. I know the mid-year budget review is only going to be a two-month window, but maybe accounting, Susie, if you can keep a separate
Tally.
Tally on what we're spending on West Yoast. Just so we can kind of get a feel for where we're going with this.
Absolutely, Councilmember Walter. We'd be happy, you know, to be fully transparent with their invoices. We could provide a report, I think probably to the Finance, Admin and Police Subcommittee, since it's kind of a financial perspective.
Yeah, I'd support sending it to Police and Finance since they meet the most often, and they can keep an eye on those tallies if there's consensus.
Yeah, I just think we should keep an eye on it. Like I said, it's a big expense item for an eight-month period. And, you know, you mentioned the Public Works Director. You know, we're really fortunate, you know, we have Jay, we have Darren, we have Hector. You know, there's not much supervision needed there as far as I'm concerned, but, you know, thank them for doing the heavy lifting while they're not being supervised. So, thank you.
Well, I assume that Vanessa would have at least a weekly meeting with Public Works or review what's going on in Public Works and specific needs. It would probably be minimal in comparison with all the other administrative and work for engineering. But if we could also learn about how much she's engaging with Public Works, I think we will all feel more comfortable. Okay? So...
Yvonne make a motion on that one?
Yes. Yeah, do you have, do you have any comments on this?
No, Madam Mayor, I do not.
Okay. All right. So, now we'll move to public comment. Are there any hands? Yvonne, are there any hands?
No hands, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you very much.
Uh-huh.
Anybody in the public to comment on this? Okay, so we'll close our public comment. I need to know if we are rejecting or recommending alternatives.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move the item by title only with the understanding that we get a mid-year review and we keep a separate ledger on the expenditures to West Yoast. we get a mid-year review and we keep a separate ledger on the expenditures to West Yost. So with that being said, the City of Cloverdale City Council, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale approving a professional services agreement with West Yost, Inc. to provide professional interim city engineering services, authorizing the city manager to execute said agreement at the cost not to exceed $175,000 and authorizing a total budget reallocation from the existing budget to cover the expenses.
It was moved by Councilmember Walter, seconded by Councilmember Bagby.
Okay. I'll take the roll call now. Mayor Cruz?
Aye. Aye.
Vice Mayor Land?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
And Councilmember Walters?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Vice Mayor Land, please, D six resolution.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item D six is regarding these telecommunicated meetings that we're having. Assembly Bill 361 allows us to continue having these meetings over Zoom and things along that type of forum and seeing the problems that we continually have as we are sitting here, starting a half hour late, can't do anything right. I think that we should choose a way to do these meetings. And since we are allowed to have these meetings in person again, we need to stop having the hybrid meetings and choose a direction. So I would, I would like to say that I want to find meetings that are good for the Zoom and ones that aren't, and these aren't. Either that or we update our systems to where they actually work correctly because this is embarrassing at the least to have the technology and the issues that we have.
So what I hear you say is that perhaps you would like to have public forums to be hybrid because there are some.
No, what I'm saying is meetings, public forums like this one should not be hybrid. It should be in-person only.
Yeah, what I'm saying is that there are some items that require participation of the, of the public. Could you explain that one, Jose?
Well, and maybe, maybe just, the mic is really loud. Maybe, maybe I could just kind of explain the item a little bit to, for folks, just for background information. So the Vice Mayor is absolutely correct. The assembly bill that was, it's the new assembly bill, 361, allows the continuation of these types of meetings, the remote meetings. So for example, the Zoom meetings. But what 361 does is it allows the council to continue to participate through Zoom without posting where they, where they are. The Brown Act, what the Brown Act requires and required previously to this assembly bill still requires is when a council member is not here in person but wants to participate remotely, they have to post similar, the similar agenda, where they're going to participate. They're going to have to allow the public to participate at the location, where they're going to be calling in from, let's say, even if it's on the phone, right? We've all, we remember all of us doing this in the past. With the governor's order, remember when, when obviously with COVID, with the pandemic, the governor issued an order and said, I'm suspending that portion of the Brown Act in order to allow these types of meetings to happen, like through Zoom, through phone, whatever it is, without council members having to post where they are. The reason for that was you don't want to open up your home to the public if we're talking about a pandemic and we're trying to keep people kind of away from each other and stop the spread of COVID. That's why the governor did that. The, that had a sunset. The governor's order had a sunset and it was the end of September. What this assembly bill did is it continued the, okay, well, what happens when that sunsets? The assembly bill says, while there's still a state of emergency in place, and the sunsets 2024, so during that time, if there's a state of emergency and if certain findings can be made, so it almost left it as an option for the councils, if certain findings can be made, that social distancing is, the teleconference meeting is required, social distancing, wearing masks, et cetera, those types of findings, then you can continue to have your meetings through Zoom. It doesn't prevent you from meeting in public, from being here in person, I mean. But what it does do is it keeps the option of the potential Zoom, the hybrid, I think was, was mentioned, meeting in place. Or if it's a smaller committee meeting that just meets on Zoom, where it allows that option to happen. Regarding the public, theoretically, you could still have your Zoom meetings for the public, but still be here in person without even doing this assembly bill. That's just another way of the public to participate. But it leaves, the best example I could give for it with a council like this that still meets in person, that likes to meet in person, is if one of you was to get sick, let's say, not feeling well, the symptoms, I'm not talking about COVID, but just some of the symptoms of COVID. It does allow you the opportunity to say, okay, well, I'll still participate, but I'll participate by Zoom. I don't want to open it up in my house because I don't know if, you know, I gotta, I gotta be tested or whatever it is. But it allows that option. But I do hear technology is an issue. While you have meetings through this assembly bill, if, and you do have a meeting like on Zoom, if the system were to go down, even if you have all the council members here, if you really have your meeting and it's, you've agendized it so the public can also participate through Zoom, if Zoom goes down, you can't continue your meeting until you fix that problem, even if you have the quorum, a quorum of the council here, because there may be members of the public that are relying on the participation through the Zoom feature. Anyway, just long background, sorry, just wanted to kind of just put it out there for the public.
No, Jose, that is perfect. And that's exactly my point is, it's not that I don't, I'm against this. I want to make meetings like this one in person only so that we can have, don't have these issues that we're having right now. And I just wanted to make it very clear to people that, you know, we're frustrated as well. And even though I'm still going to push or vote for this to go through, I want it known that I want our meetings with public forums along these lines to be in-person only or Zoom only, one or the other, no more hybrid. Other meetings that it doesn't make the difference, whatever, that's fine. But our technology is not up to date, our technology does not allow this, and if something did happen, we wouldn't be able to continue our meeting. And I want to change that.
I think that that's a valid argument, but that's not the issue that's before us. It's to continue the, it's to continue to be able to Zoom in. And I think it's important from a public health standpoint that we still have an option, we still have Delta variant out there. Again, it's like, I could just kind of have a little tickle in my throat and not want to, and think, well, I don't know what I have because I haven't been able to be tested yet. And I still want to be able to go through the meeting. So I want to be able to Zoom in. And I just think we need to have that flexibility for the time being. And it's major feedback coming. So, sorry about that, everybody. But just so that the council knows too, just, you know, I'm on several regional boards and we are all passing this. It's just, it's just in the ring because the next couple of years, we don't know what's going to be happening. So Smart has passed a continuation, S C T A, Snowmuck Power, and they're putting it on their agendas every month to renew it. And it really is just so that we have that option. I think everybody wants to get back to in-person meetings, but I'm also appreciative of the people who've been participating, be able to participate by phone. And it's, I think that, you know, that we're a little, the public is divided on what they prefer because I know people like to be home, have us on YouTube and be able to Zoom in if they want to raise their hand and comment. So, you know, I think for the time being, just for public safety. And also, I think it's been great to be able to get some of our presenters from S C T A or C P A, you know, from some of our regional partners because they're, you know, they don't have to set aside an entire evening or afternoon to come up from Padilla or come down from Mendocino, they can come and present information that we need to make our decisions. And they're able to do it through Zoom where, you know, it's, you know, you gotta hire a babysitter, you gotta make, you know, we ask a lot of our, of our staff and, you know, the people who support us doing our job. And if they can, you know, Zoom and do a PowerPoint presentation and stay home with their kids, then, you know, I support seeing that change going forward. So I just think, yeah, this is just a common sense continuation so that, you know, just in case the worst does happen and we're back to a situation where everybody needs to stay at home, legally, we're in good standing to do that. So I support continuing to, you know, approve this every month until 2024. And hopefully, yeah, let's fund some improvements in our technology, that's for sure.
Councilmember Paul?
Thank you. First, I had a question, a comment. The question is, does this expire, this bill?
Twenty twenty-four.
So the bill has a sunset of 2024. But again, if, if the emergency lifts during that time, then it wouldn't be something that the council could even use unless certain findings are made. So that's, that's why Councilmember Bagby mentioned the 30 days. What the bill requires is that every 30 days, the legislative body have, continue making the findings. If this is approved tonight, what we would be doing is, you know, once, once a month, right? So it would be one, one meeting a month. It would be, it would appear on your consent calendar in order to continue making those findings. It doesn't make a lot of sense, the way the legislation, it should be, you know, if you're under an emergency, you have the option, but they're requiring this, this continued findings.
Thank you. And my comment?
Yes.
I just, I agree with both Vice Mayor Land and Councilmember Bagby. I think, I think we really need to improve our technology, but I think it's critical that we maintain this as an option for hosting our meetings. I'd like to suggest that once this is adopted, that we, as a, maybe assign it to a subcommittee to have some guidelines of when we would want to use this or how, and who's going to notify who, you know, so we kind of have some understanding of how this is going to work.
Well, actually, Councilmember Paula, I think you bring up a great issue that has been brought up before in the Finance Admin Subcommittee, and that is the technology policy going forward for the city. So, I mean, this has just, COVID and, COVID and Zoom together have kind of illustrated the need for updating some of our policies that talk about telefaxing and things like that. And we kind of need to bring our, our policies into the 21st century. So it's a good opportunity to revisit that.
But I do support moving this forward.
And I want to make sure that you understand, I support it as well, and I just want to reiterate that, that I understand it's a common sense thing.
Oh, but it's.
There's a perfect kind of thought about it. And I just want to get it out there, we need to update what we're doing because this does not work.
It's so frustrating.
And so if we're, if we're going to do this in the next meeting, I'm done.
I got you.
And that's, that's worrying. It's ineffective and it's rude to our public to start a meeting 30 minutes later.
I agree.
And to have them not be here this time. So that's all I will do, there is nothing else. I completely supported this for now, but that was the point.
Councilmember Walters?
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Vice Mayor Land, I agree with you 100%. You know, the last thing I want to see right now, if this Zoom went down, we'd have to cancel all meetings. You know, that's, that's just not acceptable. And we definitely need to upgrade our equipment. I know David and now and everybody are really pushing to try and get this to work. We need to make some, some changes here. Personally, I think Zoom is here to stay. I think it's a way of the future. I know I use it, I attend a lot of the subcommittee meetings. What I like about it is I can attend a lot of Zoom meetings. So what I don't like about it is I can't.
You can attend all of the meetings.
You know, I get zoomed out, but I gotta be there if I can have it. You know, I gotta see the four nine. So I'll support the resolution as well, with the caveat that I'd like to see us make an effort to do something with the process meetings. So, thank you, Madam Mayor.
I want to open a public comment.
No hands. Be a zone, no hands, please.
Thank you.
I'll move D six by title only.
Moved by Vice Mayor Land, seconded by?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilmember Paula.
Okay.
I'll read the title. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale and on behalf of commissions and committees created by the City Council pursuant to Government Code Section 54952 Part N B, authorizing teleconference meetings in compliance with Assembly Bill 361 to continue to allow members of the public to safely participate in local government meetings.
Thank you.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Land?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Councilmember Walters?
Aye.
Thank you very much. And now, Councilmember Land, Vice Mayor Land, D eight.
D eight, in regards to a housing element update. And I was a little confused on it, so I asked the city manager about it. And I found out the mayor was also a little confused about it. So I want to ask David, if you could give us a quick rundown of this one, just so we can all kind of understand it and know that it's not somebody coming in here trying to rezone our city for some, for other reasons or anything along those lines.
Absolutely, Vice Mayor, members of council. And I'll certainly ask our community development director, the city manager, to chime in on this item. The item for the public is a resolution recommending approval of an agreement with Fourleaf. Fourleaf is a consulting firm that prepare, submitted a proposal to the City of Cloverdale in response to a RFP, a request for proposals, that was released to a very long list of eligible professional consultants that prepare your housing elements. The housing element is, is one of the components of our general plan, it's a mandated element, and it's one which is required to be updated on an annual cycle, either set by your, your regional housing organization. In our case, it would be the Metropolitan Transportation Commission and A BAG or through the state of California. Ultimately, it does require, the updated, your housing element does require approval by Housing and Community Development, a state agency. But what's before you tonight is a resolution approving agreement with, with Fourleaf to prepare our next housing element for our general plan. This is, was referred to as the sixth cycle. So we're in the same cycle of general plan updates to your housing element as all the other cities in California and counties. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of busy consultants right now preparing or going through the similar process of providing proposals and starting the update of the general plan. So tonight's action that we're requesting is really just to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with Fourleaf to prepare our next housing element. With that said, I think maybe underlying that is, is part of the scope of work is to, you know, look at existing properties that are designated residential. One of the key goals of the general plan is to identify how we are going to meet our regional housing needs allocation, or as often we hear, you hear the term, R E N A numbers. And again, that, those are numbers that are provided by, by, by A BAG and set, you know, on a regional basis. And the, the housing element is intended to identify how we are going to meet or comply with, or address our housing needs at various levels of affordability. So there can, underlying that process, there can be recommendations to look at rezoning properties. But in and of itself, the housing element is, is, you know, the effort tonight is really just to approve the agreement to, to initiate that process. And, you know, those are decisions in terms of rezoning that would, if, again, that's recommended or necessary for any reason to meet our housing needs, that would be part of the conversation, discussion through workshops and meetings with council and the planning commission. So Kevin, if you want anything you would think is important to elaborate on that?
I think that's, the, the big part is the R E N A. We have to demonstrate that we have enough properties zoned correctly to accommodate the, the R E N A, the housing needs numbers, as David said. In the past, we had, we didn't have to rezone because we had enough land available, you know, and that may be the case again. But if it's not, I wouldn't suspect large rezones to accommodate our R E N A. The other thing I just wanted to point out is we did receive grants in the amount of $82,000 to pay for this from the state. We have 89. Um, in the past, we had, we didn't have to rezone because we had enough land available, you know? And that may be the case again, but if it's not, I wouldn't suspect large rezones to accommodate our RENA. Um, the other thing I just wanted to point out is, we did get, receive grants in the amount of $82,000 to pay for this from the state. We have $89,000 in here, and that includes a 10% um, contingency for any overruns. So it's almost all covered by our grants.
That was, that was the ultimate part, was the rezoning and the funding for it. So I appreciate you guys doing that.
Yeah, it, uh, I, I didn't understand all, the title also, and so we discussed this this morning too. So, thank you. So, uh, I was not alone on that one. Any comments?
Housing is a dark science. One of the dark sciences.
Uh, Councilmember, uh, Walter?
I'm good, thank you.
Councilmember Paula? Okay, um, so do we have any public comments, questions? Any hands, Yvonne?
No hands.
Thank you.
So with that, I'll make a motion for D eight by title only. I'll second that.
That was a motion by Vice Mayor Lance, seconded by Councilmember Paula.
This approved resolution and agreement with Foreleaf Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $89,067 to provide housing element update services for the City of Cloverdale, sixth cycle planning period. I love this part. 2023 to 20,031. I will correct that to 2031, and I'll propose to the city manager to execute said agreement.
Can you repeat it with a second of that motion?
Councilmember Paula.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'll do the roll call now. Mayor Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lance?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Councilmember Walters?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, um, communications. David?
Mayor, there was a, uh, communication received after the packet was published. Uh, that, it's in regards to, um, an item that's on the agenda that we will discuss later relative to the Surface Transportation Board's, uh, opposition to, uh, an application that was submitted to the Surface Transportation Board on behalf of the North Coast Rail Authority. So I'll, I'll speak more to that, uh, that correspondence when we, when we speak to that item, but, uh, no other correspondence received relative to the agenda this evening.
Thank you. And at this point, um, public hearings items will begin at the time shown. Okay, so we don't have any, so we'll go to new business. And that's going to be G one, and I'll recuse myself at this moment because you are going to discuss.
Uh, Mayor, so I, I think what would be good is if, uh, David provides an overall, uh, presentation of the item, and then the, just when he gets to that portion of the funds, uh, that impact the, the location that's near your home, that's the, that's the only time where you recuse yourself.
So you don't want to take it first, the discussion of that?
Correct, but there's, there's, it's kind of like when we do the landscape and lighting districts, where there's an overall presentation first?
Okay.
And then when we get into the specifics, then we'll do that, Mayor.
Okay, great. Thank you. Go ahead, David.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Uh, the item before you tonight is, is a discussion item, and we're seeking your direction in regards to American Rescue Plan Act and, um, uh, funding that's been provided through that act to the City of Cloverdale, uh, that ultimately came through the, the, the state of California. Just by way of background, uh, in earlier this year in March, President Biden signed into law the American Rescue Plan Act. We often refer that, to that as ARPA. Uh, included with that is a significant funding that is intended to, uh, support economic stimulus across the United States. And a component of that was directed to, to, uh, cities and municipalities uh, throughout the United States, totaling over $350 billion that was intended for some very specific purposes, uh, really looking forward from the date that the act was, uh, assigned, signed into law in March. Um, the, the city of Cloverdale is what's referred to as a, a non-entitlement city, uh, and that's because we have a population of under, under 50,000. So, uh, funding under the coronavirus state and local recu- local fiscal recovery funds was provided directly from California. The funding that is, uh, came through that program under, under the ARPA was allocated to cities in two tranches. Uh, we've received the first tranche in, uh, June of, uh, this, of this year, and we expect to receive the second tranche in, uh, June of 2022. And the amount of that allocation is, uh, just roughly a million dollars per, uh, per year for a total slightly over 2 million. It's about 2 million, I think it's 2 million and 37,000. Um, the act has provided, uh, pretty specific guidance on how those funds can be used by local jurisdictions like the City of Cloverdale. Uh, and I'd like to touch on that because ultimately that will guide some of your discussion, decision-making night about how you might like to see those, those funds expended. I, I do want to provide a, kind of a cautionary note, um, that while the city has received 50%, I, I would recommend that we tonight have a discussion about planning for the second 50%, how you may want to direct those funds, but not necessarily spending them at this time until such time that we actually receive those funds. Uh, there, there, there's always the opportunity by Congress to make adjustments in those funding scenarios. And so, you know, just want to caution council when we look at that, um, and be cognizant of that. Um, but speaking specifically in regards to some of the allowed uses of the ARPA funds, it does include supporting public health expenditures, particularly directed to COVID-19 mitigation efforts. Uh, so those include things like funding, uh, certain healthcare, uh, and, uh, public safety staff, for example. Um, one of the key aspects of the, uh, ARPA was to address, uh, negative economic impacts to, uh, the cities related to the cost of this, uh, of, of responding to COVID. Um, one of the, uh, kind of, how, how the government has characterized that is to replace lost public sector revenue. Unfortunately, there's, uh, quite a significant amount of number crunching that's required to, uh, be able to, to support the notion that we lost revenue resulting from, from COVID. Uh, and, and Susie's going to kind of touch on that in a little bit. Um, some other elements that, uh, ARPA funds can be used for include paying for premium pay for, uh, essential workers. Uh, certainly, we've had that discussion with, with council about supporting our, um, our, our public safety professionals, uh, with ARPA funds. And then last but not least is, is using ARPA funds to invest in, uh, water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure to improve access to clean water, uh, improve our wastewater systems and stormwater systems, as well as to expand broadband internet. So that kind of reflects, uh, kind of the broad goals of Congress. Um, what we've included in your packet is a, uh, reference to what's called the interim final rule. This is what Treasury, the Treasury, who is the, the disbursement entity for the federal government for these funds, has really outlined a very detailed set of rules and regulations that guide, uh, the use of, of, uh, these ARPA funds. Um, what we haven't seen is actually the final rule because it's still going through the process of reflecting and taking into account public comment. Uh, but the current guidance is that we can rely on the interim final rule for, uh, how we, um, can utilize the funds. And so what we've outlined tonight is, is consistent with that. What we've also included in your packet is a proposed, uh, funding matrix uh, that identifies some, uh, starting points for council, uh, to review in terms of how, uh, you, council may want to, uh, direct American Rescue Plan Act funds. Again, based on those broad funding categories of, you know, premium pay for essential workers, uh, lost public sector revenue, uh, economic impacts, uh, then, you know, your water, sewer, broadband, uh, infrastructure investments, and then last but not least, public health expenditures. So we've, we've broken down some, uh, proposals or, uh, proposed funding ideas and concepts within each of those funding categories for, for council's consideration. Um, again, as a starting point, um, we, we, we did bring this to the Finance Admin and Police Subcommittee. There was a fairly robust discussion, uh, at, at, at the Subcommittee, and the direction was ultimately to bring this forward for, uh, council's, uh, review, consideration, and ultimately direction to staff. Um, so like that, I'd like to provide the opportunity for our, our finance director, um, Susie Holmes, to, uh, provide any additional points on, on, on this agenda item. Um, Ms. Holmes has participated in a number of, uh, webinars and presentations from, um, you know, a number of professional organizations that have looked closely at this, uh, at the American Rescue Plan Fund. And, and maybe, Susie, you can talk about, or at least touch on the, um, the, uh, one funding category for lost public sector revenue and, and how, uh, you know, the work that you did in that, in that arena and what the result was.
Sure. So the, the lost public sector revenue, um, required that we go back four fiscal years prior to the pandemic to see what, um, our increase or what our, um, cost of living normally increases. And then it compared it to going forward what you would expect. It was, it was a lot of information, and a lot of it didn't always follow reason. Like grants were included, um, if they were state grants. Um, there was, water was not included. There were, there were a lot of things that the, um, Treasury decided this is how we want to see the calculation. We want everybody's calculation to be this way. We went through the process and did it, and because of the grants that we received specifically for, um, airport and some of our CDBG grants, um, they caused, and the increase in the cannabis revenue, it offset any decrease in revenue that we saw in TOT and, and other related. So, but with that said, right now, we're not eligible for any revenue decrease. But it's a living, breathing thing, and it go, it will continue, and we can keep claiming as long as we do the report up until 2024. So there is a possibility that we may be able to claim some lost revenue, just not today.
And real quickly on that, I really wanted to point that out because, um, a number of other cities who did experience large public sector revenue declines or losses, i- in, in doing so, being able to backfill that city coffers with, with lost revenue provides a tremendous flexibility to those cities to basically spend ARPA funds uh, how they, how, you know, at their desire, um, without necessarily complying with the other guidelines. You know, basically, they're backfilling general fund revenue or revenue losses into being able to use those, that revenue for whatever purpose they're backfilling it. And that gives a lot more flexibility. So unfortunately, in our instance, because of the work that our finance director did, and we're, we're able to, uh, find that we, we actually lost public sector revenue, um, which is a good thing. Uh, it, we're, we're, we're left with the guidance in, in the funding categories that the, the bill provided. And, and that's, that's what we've provided in the matrix is really what are those other funding categories that are provided for under ARPA, uh, and some, again, some suggestions on, uh, potential consideration around some projects that you could fund. Um, I did want to point out that one of the key items we heard from council, and we certainly heard echoed at the Finance Admin and Police, was support for funding, uh, a capital improvement project within your water utility. And I just wanted to hand out, so council had it, um, is a copy of the, um, uh, the water section of your CIP, so to pass that around. I think there might be a couple extra. Uh, what is included in the CIP is the complete list of, uh, capital improvement projects for your water system that were identified in the most recent version of the draft CIP. Uh, that draft CIP just, just did go to, uh, earlier this, uh, month, was reviewed by the Planning Commission, and they, they did adopt the resolution, uh, finding it consistent with the general plan. And our goal is to bring back, uh, at your next meeting, the, uh, full capital improvement program for final consideration and adoption by, by council. Uh, council did previously review and see the CIP and, you know, refer it to Subcommittee. Uh, but our goal is, again, to bring it forward so we can get, get it in place, get it adopted, and then, uh, you'll have that. But, uh, wanted to share this with you because it does provide some guidance tonight. Um, council, I don't think, you're not obligated necessarily to, uh, identify a specific project. Uh, but you can, you know, earmark or, or reflect that you'd like to see the, a certain amount of funds, uh, of the, of the, of our, of our, of ARPA funds allocated to a, a water CIP. Um, so real quickly, I just want to kind of walk through with council some of the items that we, we identify for, for council's potential consideration of how you may want to direct these funds. Um, first, starting with premium pay for essential workers. As council did approve, uh, some one-time bonuses, uh, late in the fiscal year for our labor groups, you know, in response to extending their, their MOUs. Uh, we believe that's an eligible expense that you could reimburse the general fund or, and all other funds that, uh, had, um, uh, cost allocations to. And so that's what you see in the matrix is approximately $60,000 for premium pay. Uh, again, that's not required, but that is a identified cost that you, that you could use American Rescue Plan funds for. Uh, moving on to economic impacts, there are, uh, some agreements there that we've, uh, identified, uh, including the Chamber Agreement and the Senior Center. Um, you know, both of those organizations are providing and have provided a number of services related to the COVID response, uh, and are also addressing, you know, uh, larger economic impacts in our community for businesses. And so some of those, uh, uh, figures are identified there. Uh, and, and again, those, for instance, the Chamber Agreement is funded almost entirely by the general fund. So if council decided to utilize some, uh, ARPA funds to, to pay for the cost of that agreement, it would help, would help alleviate some, a general fund expense. Uh, moving on to, uh, water, sewer, and broadband, uh, we have kind of, we have all three of those categories identified. Uh, broadband is a, um, we have a cost allocation, uh, proposed cost allocation of 162,000. That's, uh, based on quoted cost to install fiber to, uh, City Hall, the Police Department, and, and the, and the, uh, Corporation Yard, our Public Works Department, um, followed by sewer, which, um, I, I think is directed to, uh, storm, storm drain work at the Times Square property. Uh, and last but not least, about a, about $150,000 directed to a water CIP. Um, and, and that's where, you know, I think council should look at the, um, the CIP section of the, for, for water, uh, projects, uh, that it just handed out. Staff did identify, what we, uh, uh, recommended was kind of a priority project is to, uh, replace water meters and registers throughout the city on a citywide basis. Uh, but that was a conversation that, um, at the, uh, the Finance Admin and Police Subcommittee, where, uh, the, the direction was to, you know, look at some, some, uh, look at the full CIP list of projects and provide direction on, on if you'd like to prioritize a particular project. And I've asked Aaron Hernandez to join us tonight because I thought you might want to seek his, his guidance and input on some of the CIP projects that are, that are listed in your CIP. Uh, moving on, we've also identified some public health expenditures. Uh, we, we certainly, uh, had costs related to COVID supplies, uh, for things, you know, for, for sanitation purposes for, uh, City Hall and other facilities. Uh, we- We are currently engaging in COVID testing, particularly for, for our public safety officials. We, we've entered, we entered into an agreement previously with the Citrus Fair Funding Agreement last year for $5,000 to support funding their, their costs for their functioning as a emergency operations center or as a care, or as under a care and shelter branch. One item I really wanted to touch on here is, under public health expenditures with the audio video upgrades, and, and those costs are, are based on quotes received to upgrade the AV system here at the Citrus, at the CPAC.
Something tells me you're going to get support for that.
Those include a camera and improved audio system. I know I've provided those quotes to Alan to take a look at, and those would be able to supplant the services that are currently provided, you know, gratefully by Alan, and be, have a fixed system in here that we could utilize rather than the current system that we, we tried to put together. Let's see, there's additional expenses for safety employees, and I have to ask Suzy on clarification on the, the two different employee COVID testing components. And then last but not least, under household, we do include $5,000 for utility billing relief, and we recognize there has been an impact to COVID on residents being able to fully pay their utility bills, and, and this is a way of, again, funding the existing general fund expense for, or the, yeah, it's a general fund expense for, for that purpose. And again, that can be increased or decreased. Concurrently, we are working on a, a program that's offered through the, the state to fund our ravages, address ravages in both our, our water and wastewater utilities, so that may be an alternative funding source for that purpose. With that said, that kind of concludes an overview and, and.
The letter of Food Bank.
Oh, yes, there, thank you, Mayor, for that reminder. There, we, we did receive correspondence from the Redwood Empire Food Bank that's specifically requesting funding assistance in, related to their food service that they've provided in our community. They've been very active in providing and addressing food insecurity in our community throughout COVID, and they continue to do that. We've, we've seen a request come across, or was provided to all cities, you know, asking and requesting some funding support by cities, and included in your packet is a letter from their Board of Directors requesting consideration of an allocation of 2% of the funds. I think, just for reference, 2% would be roughly $20,000 annually if council was interested in allocating some funds to the Redwood Empire Food Bank for the, for the food service that they've provided in our community.
So it's not really delineated in a letter, but it's my understanding that the Redwood Empire Food Bank, wow, here we go, lots of people. They do support Cloverdale Food Pantry significantly, that's my understanding, and they're just not mentioned specifically in the letter, and then I was just wondering if there was an inquiry directly from the folks who run the Cloverdale Food Bank for a request for funds?
Yeah, we didn't receive an inquiry directly from the Cloverdale Food Pantry, but, but you're, you're absolutely correct, Councilmember Bagby, that the Food Pantry does receive an allocation of, of food supplies directly from Redwood Empire Food Bank, and, and then the Redwood Empire Food Bank does, does have their own direct distribution via a number of events in our community, including events held at the Citrus Fair as well as at the Senior Center.
So my, my recommendation, just to make, make it a little cleaner, to start that way, maybe we could start, David, with the, the item related to Times Square. With, well, well, what, what I'm, what I'm envisioning is Times Square discussion, open it up to the public as far as those comments, and then come back for the rest of the items, and then that gets opened up to the public as well.
And for the record, Madam Mayor has left the area and is recusing herself from this portion of our meeting due to her proximity to the Times Square project with her home. So let's start with that. The storm drain from Times Square is on the list. Who wants to go first?
Just a question, thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. A couple of questions. David, how sure are we that we're going to get that second wave of funding? You indicated that Congress could change it. I mean, we're spending it, some of it before we even get it. Is, is the possibility that we may not get it, number one?
I, I, I think council should acknowledge that we haven't received it, and, and when we haven't received something, I don't think there's any guarantee that we will. There was some discussion, I understand from Congress, that, you know, you're still deliberating a, a, a large federal infrastructure bill, and, you know, it's also a consideration around the amount of debt that the federal government wants to consider as part of that. There has been legislators that have said, you know, maybe we can use some of the money that was allocated under the American Rescue Plan to address some of the funding needs under the, the proposed federal infrastructure bill. So again, tremendous amount of uncertainty in that legislative process, and, and so that's where kind of my earlier comment was, you know, I think we should plan for the full, receipt of the full 2 million, but just maybe acknowledge that, you know, we, we have until 2025 to fully expend the funds, you know, maybe not, you know, make sure we receive that second tranche before we fully, fully spend, spend it. So, you know, let's not, recommendation would be, don't spend it until we, we have it in hand.
Did the school district get any funding as well?
I, I'm not clear whether the school district was.
That's kind of related to the Times Square thing, but do you know if they received any?
I, I understand that school districts did receive some ARPA funds, but I'm not clear, you know, the stipulations and on, on, you know, the dollar amounts that, and what, what they were tied to. You know, the portion we're speaking to is to, you know, directly, the direct allocation to cities.
Thank you, thank you for the clarification. I, I just wanted to really emphasize, I think at the Police Finance Subcommittee, we talked a little bit about, we have money in the bank, 1.3 million. Those projects we can commit to and move forward with, we should be prioritizing for the next way, certainly not spending the money before it gets to the bank. So I just wanted to emphasize, it's not a matter of go out and do it and hope the money comes, that's not the plan. So it would be two, two lists. Current, we can move forward, one that we're going to hope we can implement next year.
Now, we're, specifically, we're talking about the Times Square.
That's correct. We're only speaking with them as the Madam Mayor can come back.
Okay, so now that we've gotten some of the issues clarified.
And that's 100 and.
250,000 after we quibble over 175,000, 175,000 dollar contractors, engineers. So I have to say that I do take issue with that sizable an allocation going to Times Square, and I'm so glad I have this capital improvement program list, and I'm very glad Darren's here to answer any specific question, and I think we heard from him loud and clear during the discussions regarding water rates. Our infrastructure, our city's infrastructure for our current rate payers has to come first. I absolutely value the Times Square project and our partnership with AVH, that you don't take your friend out to lunch for their birthday and, and not have any milk and bread in your refrigerator for your kids. And I think that not putting our, our capital improvement project first, I'm just looking at some of these projects, and I know, you know, Darren called them out specifically, probably not the water master plan because that's just a bunch of paper, but, I mean, specifically the chlorine tank, the chemical tank rehab, that's a mandate. You know, we have, we have in red, mandates, we have well replacement number seven, a mandate, 300, almost 303,000. We have well rehabilitation number eight, 260,000, which we could, we're almost there with that 250,000. And then we have well, that well master plan, again, not something that more paperwork, but just saying it probably is necessary, 200 grand. And then another mandate, we could get, we could, we could probably get pretty far on the Cherry Creek Reservoir Rehab. The list of mandates, I've got three more, if you'll indulge me, I've got, let's see, Deloitte Reservoir, I don't know if I mentioned that, 1 million, about 1 million and two. We have the chemical tank rehab, again, 454, 600, which we could probably get the balances somewhere. And then we've got 400,000 for the fervor tanks. You know, these are mandates, and these are urgent, and these need to be done now. I'm all for being a partner with our, our nonprofits, I'm all for being a partner with, you know, with the Senior Center and with the Food Pantry. I definitely would like to see, you know, some dollars go to Redwood Food Pantry because I, I think that they bailed us out, and, but honestly, I can't justify the 250,000 to Times Square when there's other federal money available for that. When we have urgent water problems that will benefit, we, we get moving on these projects now, they will benefit our rate payers immediately, and our rate payers should be our top priority as far as the council is concerned in how we spend this money. So I have to say, I just, I can't support that item, and I, I think it should be pulled because I, I think that that money can be found elsewhere, but this is, we, we have urgent needs in our infrastructure that just can't be ignored any longer, and I think that's where I'd like to see the bulk of the money going. And I don't want to debate any of the other issues without the, the mayor, but I have to say, I just, I just can't support that line item. I don't think this is an appropriate use of one-time federal money.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. You know, here I go again, Suzy, you know, we have 1.3 million, or should I say 1,300,000? I, I, again, would like to see an accounting of that, you know, just as simple as can be, you know, 1,300,000, 250 for the drain. I, I want to see how everything flows and how we spend every penny of that, because I looked at the Chamber Agreement, 75,000. I looked at, I looked at some of the other allocations that come here, that was already approved under the general fund, so I don't know why we're taking it out of this wave of money. The same with the Senior Center. I mean, between the two, we're talking 90,000 that we've already budgeted out of the general fund. Why are we listing the whole amount here is, is my question.
I'm going to ask you to say it again, the mayor's out here.
Okay. Well, I, I understand, I'm just addressing the shortfall that Melanie's looking for because quite frankly, I, I support doing that Times Square project and getting that thing moving. I mean, we've fottled around enough with that thing, and I just wish we could put the whole street through and, and do all the sidewalks and everything so that it's moving ready. I mean, I understand if, if, if the stimulus package comes through, I guarantee you, hopefully, we can do a lot of things on this water list. But, but for now, it's a one-shot money, and that project needs to get moving. I look at it better than the whole community by having it there, so.
Thank you. You know, I absolutely agree with both of you. I think water is the highest priority, however, everything else can't come to a strategic bolt. Health services is a high priority to our community, we need it now. We, you know, we can't just keep kicking the can down the road. We've been talking about this for probably 10 years now, and I know the health centers work hard to get grant funding, but you know as well as I, based on our city application, that funding's not that easy to get, and the money they have is limited. And this street is a city street that's going to go through here. The sewer system needs to be done, and it's going to pay long-term dividends to the residents of the city. This is something that's going to serve the city well for the next 15 years here. I don't think we can ignore that. Health services are critical, and we have a large senior population, we need those here, as we do water. Certainly, I'm not suggesting water's not important, I think that should be right up there with it, but we've got to look at all these things relevant, and we'll talk more about some of the other sources and the other potential funding mechanisms to get some of these in place outside of using this ARPA fund, because there's a couple of things that I want to bring up from the mayor's here. But I totally support this, I think it's been long overdue, I just think we need to get this done. Hopefully, they can get the monies in place and get that building moving, and we can get some state-of-the-art medical services facility here for our residents, so that's important to me.
And that's why I had asked about the school district receiving some of this money as well, you know.
So I'll bring any comments on that, because I was, you know, prior to this, and they did receive money, but it can be spent in certain ways, and I guarantee you, they cannot spend money on a super tight end of the street with school allocated on it. And so with that said, I look at this as a partnership, I've been talking with this on these communities for about three years myself, not for a whole ten and half year, and this has been the point of intention is, who owns the height of the street and who's going to upgrade it? And I, I don't think that a medical facility that's working on grants should be responsible for its underground in the street. I don't think that a school district should take money from their kids and think for their children to put a pipe under the street. I think that it should be coming out of funds from the city, that is our responsibility, and that's how I feel. And so I think this is a good way to get it without coming out of general fund. If it did come out of this, I would be directly coming out of general fund myself.
I can't agree, I was on the descending go, I think this is a relatively irresponsible use of, of city funds. Of one-time federal grants that can help us get out of the delayed maintenance and the neglect that our water system has, has endured for years. We have urgent mandated projects that we could use to, to improve our, our quality of our water systems immediately. And just because, and, you know, just because I think that money could be used better doesn't mean I don't support AVH, doesn't mean, I don't believe that they're an incredibly important partner, but the fact is, is that our partners, even whether they're a nonprofit or a for-profit or, you know, another government entity, they have to be able to pay their, their share, they have to be able to pay for their infrastructure and pay their way, and if their project doesn't pencil out, it doesn't pencil out, it shouldn't be put on the backs of the rate payers of Cloverdale. We already heard loud and clear how close in Cloverdale feel about their water rates. And so I think it is very clear that we should be supporting these projects that are here in red, that are mandated and that are immediate. Times Square, I absolutely agree, it's, it's important, and I support, I support the project, but not at the expense of some other urgent needs that I think that we have. And again, it comes back to, you know, it's 250, we're talking about 250,000. Well, 250,000, it's, it's a lot of money to anybody, you know, to most people, there's probably some exceptions, but it's, it's a lot of money. And the question is really how can we leverage it so that it pays the most dividends to our, to our rate payers? And that is putting it towards some of these really denying, and, and projects that just, they just need to get done yesterday. I mean, one of the things that we could do is we could just go ahead and do all of the digital meters so that we know where all the leaks are, you know, in town. Instead of doing it piece by piece, you know, year in, year out, you know, a little couple of years at a time, we could do it all once, know where our leaks are, and it gives us multiple, it would give us multiple benefits because we know where the leaks are immediately. We would be able to conserve more water, and it also contributes to fire safety, contributes to public safety and fire safety because we're not then draining and then disining by, you know, probably leaks throughout our system. So I think it's, it's very unfortunate that that's how the council's laying, I don't think it is fiscally responsible, and I don't think it's the best investment of, of these dollars. of these dollars, so I'll leave that.
Well, it's nice to be able to disagree and still be focused on the need of that medical facility and I appreciate your, your position on that, Melanie.
So someone told me in fiscal conservative.
Let's just, let's just hope we get that stimulus money. I'm sorry about that.
No, I just want to say I don't disagree with anything you said other than I don't think that we're being irresponsible using the money. I think this project is equally as important as any other project that's out there. And there's a lot of people in this community who rely on Alexander Valley Health Service, not to mention all the additional services that are to come to serve this community for many, many years in the future. So I, I don't feel there's anything irresponsible. The unfortunate and the hard call here is there's only so much money and a lot of things that need to be done.
So I want to know, I'd like to know actually how that.
Well, what I'm thinking.
I'm asking you a question. How was that amount?
I'd like to finish my thought though.
And how did it get on this list?
I'd like to finish my, I'm sorry, what was your question?
How did that amount get on the list? And who, and whose position was it? Because I, I just, it seems very arbitrary and inelaborate that it got, got put on this list. How did that happen? There was, and there's been no little input until now on how that amount of money got put on this list for?
That's, that's why I'm just discussing this with you on a monthly basis.
Well, I, I'm asking now because I, and he's on there, he's on the committee, so he can report out all of the things.
It's, I'm not going to even answer the question because how did all these things get on the list? Because somebody expressed that they're important. So I, I don't know. I, I felt it was important to bring this on. So it may be me to ask that it be put on there. I don't know how it got on there, so I can't answer that. Maybe the city manager can.
Maybe he's going to get it.
But I think I did ask that it be put on there. Hopefully, that's why it's on there. Again, I'm going to reiterate what I said, I support it. I think it's important. I think you're absolutely right. Water is a high priority. I think you're wrong. This is not an irresponsible thing to be talking about. It is an important community project. So with that, I'll leave it there.
So I, please, the city manager can answer that question. How was that amount arrived at and how was it put on the list compared to other items that are on this list?
Absolutely, Councilmember Bagby. You know, what we, what staff did in developing this, just again from the big picture, is we tried our best to listen to council and, and when we heard, you know, different interests expressed about how we might be able to use those funds, we, that's what we tried to do is capture all those, you know, council intent in terms of, you know, which projects were listed and, and doing so in a manner that is consistent with the, the guidance provided by, by Treasury. Now drilling down to this specific item, we, we did hear at the, at the Finance Administration Police Subcommittee, you know, interest in funding the storm drainage improvements at Times Square utilizing the, you know, with, with American Rescue Plans. Well, I think maybe stepping back, there was even an interest in just how might the city fund help address that, that issue? Because it's a, it's been a challenging issue that we've been spending a lot of time on trying to address is, is, you know, how do we, how do we address this complex issue of drainage that comes from the school onto what is, you know, property owned by our housing successor agency and, and facilitate future development of the property? And so we did commission a, a study by, by Breljean Race, who has been the project engineer for both the city as well as Alexander Valley Healthcare. They did a very extensive analysis of the costs of improvements by lot that was presented to the, the Joint City School Subcommittee. I think the school's perspective was that, and I don't want to mischaracterize it, but that, that it was, it was kind of a developer and city responsibility. And so, you know, we were challenged with how, how can we, how can we finance or fund these improvements? The, the cost allocation that was developed by Breljean Race indicated a cost of about a hundred and fifty thousand, but what that didn't, what it doesn't include is the detailed design work that would be required, you know, that what's been, what was developed was a conceptual design. So, you know, really to, to construct something, we need to go to detailed engineering level design. There's additional survey work that would be required. And, and ultimately, if it's done as a city project, we, we would have to prepare bid specifications, a bid package and, you know, go through the public bidding process. So basically, what, what we did is we estimated it would cost about another hundred thousand dollars on top of the hundred and fifty thousand dollars to, you know, be able to complete the project from kind of soup to nuts, preparing the, you know, preparing detailed engineering specs, preparing, you know, the bid documents and ultimately putting out to bid as a city project. So that, that's, that's kind of a reflection of where the cost estimate was derived. It's, it's really a high-level cost estimate, you know, only really once you get to really detailed level design work do you have, you know, what would be called a engineer's estimate that we could, you know, better base our numbers on. So I, I think it's, 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 at this point is kind of our, our best guess estimate of what the cost would be to be able to deliver a project as a standalone project by improving those storm drain systems to.
When were the items on the SIP list considered? In the discussion? When were the, when were the items on the SIP list or any of the other, you know, mandates for spending that the city has on our capital improvement program? When, when were those discussed?
So those.
Part of what you do to met America.
No, I don't think so because it's specific to a month.
Yeah.
What other projects were considered in addition to this one?
Oh, right. So I think, I think, I think you're asking a larger question around the list of water improvement projects that are included in the capital improvement program.
Right.
And, and that's, that's an effort that was largely staff-driven and this is an area where, you know, maybe I'll, well, I'd like to, I think this is an area where I do think Mayor Cruz would benefit from participating.
Well, and this is, okay, so I'll go back to my point. I think the issue is that it was, it seems to me that the, how to fund the, for instead of Times Square was a problem, was an issue at the subcommittee, which I know how they work because I used to chair that subcommittee and I gave it up when we were appointed, as we'll never call it. So I do know how the subcommittee system works. But what I, what I'm not hearing is, what I'm hearing is that this was a question about how fund these improvements at Times Square, but none of the other urgent mandated SIP projects were, were considered. This was just unilaterally put on this list and none of the other urgent matters were considered. That's what I'm, that's what I'm hearing.
Well, I, I think the other project did.
It makes, and it does make sense. It's like hearing that the committee was considering the, how to, how to fund the Times Square improvements, but our existing list of mandated urgent projects were not considered. That's what I'm hearing.
No, here's how the meeting went. When they came up with the water, we asked that they come back because Darren, our water boss. I don't know. Over, yeah. He gave a presentation and mentioned tanks and that very well came up and that's why we brought this. We didn't have this up there, but that was one of the items that we wanted to come forward for serious consideration to try to address those problems. So that, that's why I take Darren here this evening, based on our request from that meeting. So, yeah, but that, this was equally expressed as an important item, so. But water was certainly one of the top priorities and that's why we're here.
I don't think it rises, I don't think of allocating, I'll just, to sum up, I don't think that allocating two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for, for Times Square rises to the level of urgency of our capital improvement program and these mandated items, which we could get a well for this. So when it comes down to brass tacks, that's, that's my, that's my issue. That's why I can't, I can't support this item and I, and I'm not, I'm not really pleased with what I'm hearing. The subcommittee's process was because, you know, this is one, this is one-time federal money and we have urgent matters that need to be taken care of and these partners should, you know, these, you know, these folks who are part of Times Square, they're our development partners and they have to be able to have a project that pencils out that, and I, I think that they have development fees that can be recovered and available elsewhere. We don't have options for these. So that's, you know, so I, I'm sorry, I can't.
So we can agree to disagree on this without a doubt. I, I certainly hear you. I don't disagree that water's high priority. Certainly, I think the subcommittee did address it. Whether you agree with that, that's certainly up to you, but in my mind, we did. I still.
I'm sure that you're right to do it. That's the point.
Well, I didn't mean that as a joke. Yeah, that doesn't have to be fun.
Well.
This is a serious conversation because the health centers are not a joke. It's a critical.
I never said it was. I never said it was.
No, I'm not. I'm not giving you.
You're putting, no. But I'll call for the vote because I don't need to say too and that's not a joke. Thank you. And actually, you need, you actually need to open up public comment and that's going to go out.
I don't want to belabor this, but you, you made a lot of things publicly that aren't true. You said things that just aren't accurate, that's, aren't accurate. I mean, as simple as that. And it's offensive because this isn't what we're here for. We're here to try to do the best we can with what we got to work with for our community and our constituents. All of it's important. You know, this particular project, as you went on to say, only serves the developer. It serves the kids that have to go to school, that use that road, the parents being able to safely get in and out of that street, taking care of the water problems that's there and bringing good medical services to the city. Those aren't just throwdown, get rid of, we don't want. So, so I recognize, I respect your opinion, I just disagree. I just wanted to say that publicly because there's people out there listening and this is not this or that, it's all of it. We're trying to do as much as we can with the little bit of money we've got, okay? So we'll leave it there.
And when I look at this list, I see twenty different items and I see about half of them that are wants, that things that are in our general fund, the things that we don't have to do. If we're really looking at the needs due to the pandemic, we're going to take offense. Ninety percent of this list, I understand that the city has needs, that's different. So there's two different things we're talking about here is what's necessary for a pandemic versus what we want to spend our money on because, and I, and I understand, I completely agree and I'm glad Darren is here to talk about some of these projects. However, I look at what is going to affect our public the most and I see things like this pipe. It's a simple thing that is going to improve so much. If you knew what went on at those schools because of the storm drains in this area, the schools flood and classrooms get ruined on a yearly basis. If it rains two inches in one day, you're having six to eight classrooms that are flooded because of this issue. I know that when I was there, we got trouble for going over onto Times Square and cleaning out the storm drain area with our own tractors. You, we can't do that and, or at that time. Now, the school district has a sand problem and they can't, with all this new infrastructure and things they're doing, all this fifty, sixty million dollars in things they're spending. A pipe in the city street or on Times Square corner, however you want to word it, is causing issues and it needs to be put on one of these three guys. And I think the school is going to want. Let's move into public comment, please, Yvonne.
Okay, we have Bethan McLean, who has her hand up.
Bethan McLean just walked by. Remove her from.
Okay.
If that wasn't the grand entrance, I don't know what it is.
The time you just worked out, I was in my office and I just decided I'm going to run down there and comment in person. I just wanted to speak to the entire council and let you know that we have had these discussions when, and I know that some council members were present when we met, I think it was, was it, no, it was much earlier, in the year, we met prior to the election last winter and, well, it was fall, I remember the weather. And there was some discussion about the way we were managing our drainage and there had been a misunderstanding among the engineers about the volume of water that our, that our drainage system would handle. And when that was clarified, they said that's more than adequate for the volume of water that you will be producing or that will be running off of your property. Sorry, I just ran in, so I'm trying to catch my breath. And with a mask, it's even harder. And at that time, we had offered, because we had heavy machinery there, to put a pipe in just as a goodwill gesture. Unfortunately, the timing didn't work out, so we passed that stage of our, of our construction and this came up again later. And the district, we really are working on a partnership, but the district does maintain that this isn't our development and it's not our problem to solve. So I just simply want to make sure that the entire council understands the process, what was discussed, why the district has this position. We do manage an enormous amount of runoff that comes from uphill of this particular property, runs through our campus and has caused flooding because there wasn't adequate drainage put in when the development went in uphill from us. So we've, we've tried to resolve that with, with our current drainage and there've been any number of things I won't get into now with regard to how we've tried to work with the city and issues that we've had to resolve with drainage on our other campus that fell under very different management and jurisdiction and, like guidance, I should say, not jurisdiction. So we've, we've spent a lot of time and energy on this and we are not in any way trying not to be partners, but we, we maintain that, you know, this isn't our responsibility and, and it is not that we are trying to pass the buck because we know that the city is confronted with many of the same issues that we are, which is making the most of the funds we have in a part of our county that's a little bit off the radar, where we really have to fight for every resource we can. So I just simply want to make sure that we move forward as partners and that there's, you know, an understanding of how we got to where we are. Thank you.
But Vice Mayor, Council, if I can, just, I wanted to note that there, you referenced earlier a study that was done conducting an analysis of drainage on, on the Times Square property and, you know, one of the focus areas of that study was to look at the cost of addressing storm drainage from the school site, you know, connecting the two storm drains. Well, there's one, one that drains kind of where the proposed extension of Washington Street is proposed, along with connecting the, the new LID facility that was constructed as part of the gymnasium. Breljean Race did identify the cost of that, of those, construction of those improvements at, at approximately fifty thousand dollars. It's fifty thousand five hundred and fifty. One option that you may want to consider as part of this discussion is we are working on a development agreement with, with Alexander Valley Healthcare for proposed future development of a wellness facility on that lot. The development agreement is an opportunity to accomplish a number of things, including, you know, the development goals for the city and the development goals for, for the developer, but also to look at things like fees and cost allocation of improvements. You know, one opportunity here would be to, to look at that fifty thousand dollar figure as a way to address the cost of addressing the schools, you know, drainage, but, but having that be part of the development agreement with the wellness center. Of course, that would be, you know, subject to future negotiations or ongoing negotiations, I should say, with, with the wellness center's attorneys and our attorneys, but that might be something you could do as a placeholder, would be providing, you know, if it's not two hundred and fifty thousand from a perspective of a city project, it could be a, our funding contribution to supporting drainage improvements for the overall Times Square property and specifically addressing the portion of the drainage from the, from, you know, that, you know, flows from the school site. So I just wanted to kind of put that out there as, as I think there's a, there's an opportunity here. It's less than two hundred and fifty thousand, but I think it, it might address some of the concerns that I think I've heard from Ms. Howell, this is, you know, how is a project like that address the impact of this drainage, you know, that comes from a neighboring, a neighboring property? So I just throw that out there, I think that's a, that's an option for council's consideration. consideration as part of your, your, your discussion on this item.
If you want to comment on this section here?
Thank you, Todd. Thank you, uh, council members. So I just really want to echo what Betha just said about us all working together and being partners. There's, um, a lot of things that have gone on that haven't been addressed correctly, planned correctly, whatever. Gus said this a long time ago, or, or Councilmember Walter, sorry. Um, we want to get this right. We want to get this right. Okay? This is a huge investment. It's a huge need in this community, and we want to get it right, and we want to be partners. I've said from the gate, whatever needs to be done over here, we will pay our share, which according to Bel, Bralge and Reese, uh, $82,000 or something was our share, right? Okay, so it's never been a question about that. It's about how can we leverage the opportunity to do what needs to be done. We have a public school on Washington Street with no public access. And who is that on? Right? We have a school that's flooded by drainage up here, and, and now we have a health center coming in here that's going to be affected by drainage coming down. We want to do what's right, but the city needs to help us do that. And this funding that's come along is one-time funding. The funding for everyone with these dollars is one-time funding. We have to build on that, and we want to do that. That's our goal. That's our goal. We want the street to go all the way through. Not for us. The traffic studies already show that we don't need it. We can make it halfway and still have our health center. But that's not what's best for the city, not what's best for the school, all of those kinds of things. So I just want to really be clear that we have penciled all this in. We can afford to do our part. We will continue to seek funding for everything we can, but we want to be partners with the city, with the school, with the community. We want what's best for the community. I get it. I get what you're saying. I get the stuff. There's a whole lot of things on those, um, lists that I would have comments on as well. So, so just for, from our perspective, we're here to work with the city, but we also want the city to be working with us, because we do bring a value to this community and a much-needed value and service. You're talking to the two biggest servers of community health in this community, the school district and the health center. So we're, we're your resource. We're, we're your asset, and I would like to see the city work with us. And I do appreciate the support that I have had and, and feel I will continue to have with developing this project. Happy to answer any questions.
There's another hand raised in, uh, on the virtual audience. It is Nina Hatchett.
Okay, go ahead, Yvonne.
Sure, let me unmute myself. Hi, everyone. Good evening, City Council, city staff, and the audience. You know, I, I was part, uh, in, I was in the audience when we talked about water and we, improving water infrastructure, raising water rate, rates. And I, I just, I think that, I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
I, I, I think, I think that what, what we do with this one-time funding, if there's a way to somehow handle the capital improvement from, not all of them, because this is not going to go a very long way, really. I, I don't have all of the, the list in front of me, but even this windfall is, uh, there's so many needs and, and we don't, we don't have the resource to fill them all. But I, I, I just think about how passionate people were about the fact that they don't see, the, the rate-paying public doesn't see that their monies are being, um, invested or cared for wisely. I, I don't believe that that's true.
Hey, Nina?
But I just, yes?
Before you continue, we're not talking about all the items that we have on this list, we're only talking about the one that's for Times Square, because the mayor lives close and has to recuse herself from that exact portion of this topic.
Oh, okay, well, I, excuse me, but I, okay, I.
Can I ask you to hold off for a few minutes until we open up with everything else?
Water is to our community. Um, so if it's just the Times Square piece that we're talking about, I think that maybe there's other things on this list that.
Yes, and I want you, I want to hear, and I want the mayor to hear your comments, so if you don't mind waiting just a few more minutes, it would be wonderful.
Okay, yeah, I'll wait a few more minutes. Sorry, I, I misunderstood.
Oh, you're perfect, thank you so much. Sir, did you have a comment on this Times Square portion of it?
No more hands.
This is something, some, excuse me. I'm not used to that.
Yvonne, I have one in the audience here who is coming up to speak.
Okay.
Could you please state your name for me, sir?
Yeah, my name is David Washington.
Thank you, sir.
And I'm a resident at, um, Divine Apartments, which is a senior citizen place. And, um, I've been there for a year plus, and, um, we've had a problem with people smoking. And the manager keeps telling us that it's a smoking unit. And the city council here enacted a smoking audi- ordinance, I believe. They've got it right here, it's, uh, Smoking in Public Places, chapter eight, zero, eight. I've got a copy if somebody. Is something wrong, or?
No, sir, we're, we're, we're okay.
Okay. Um, so several tenants, we're all old age people, we're senior citizens. The manager, who represents DOMUS, um, finally got a clue that we were not happy, and so she put a notice up that, and I got the notice right here, um, the people can smoke in their units, but the, she smokes in the hallway, and anybody opens their door where they've been smoking, it comes into the hallway. My right to have clean, smoke-free air, and, and not just mine, you know, there's a whole bunch of tenants there that, uh, don't have that, it's been taken away from us. And, um, and now, uh, she has put ashtrays in the entryway, so anybody that smokes supposedly 25 feet from the building, they don't smoke 25 feet from the building, they smoke alongside the building. And they come and put their cigarettes in the ashtray, which is in the entryway. Uh, there's ashtrays in other units. There was a picnic table out the back where the manager made, uh, uh, an ashtray for people to use. You can't smoke back there. If you, if you follow this rule of 25 feet, it's only 15 feet to the fence, you can't smoke back there. And my, my, my reason for being here tonight is to ask, what was the intent of, of, the, uh, the, not supervisors, um, the members here? What was the intent of this smoking in public places? Because it, there's, there's one line here that makes, that makes a lot of sense to me, and I was a smoker for 25 years. And it says, "The idea of this, um, the smoking in public places is to address the needs of smokers and non-smokers." And if those needs conflict, which they certainly are right now, um, then the, the rule for clean, smoke-free air exists and takes over.
So David, I am, I'm familiar with your apartment complex and your manager, and I will take the paperwork, and I'll, I'll go meet with her and see if I can help you resolve this, okay?
Okay.
I'll take that personally and do it myself.
And, and on the second page of this, which you guys adopted, it says to go to the police department if we have a problem. I went to the police department, and, um, they said they can't do anything. It's like, what? My question is, I'm, I'm more of a representative for the other tenants.
Sir.
What do we do?
So, well, here's what we do, is I'll, we'll take it under consideration as a council. I will personally speak with our, our city attorney, and our city manager, and our police chief, and we will establish a plan as to what we can do to help you out, okay?
Yeah, okay.
Right?
Yeah, I appreciate that.
If you don't mind, could you write down your name and phone number for us?
Oh.
So that we can have it here?
Yeah.
And just provide it to the police chief or the city manager on either end, so that we can have it? Appreciate it.
I've got a pen here, if somebody would, yep.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you, David, it was very nice to meet you.
Sorry?
So do we have action notice? No, we don't, there's no action notice. It's to give him direction.
Yvonne, is there anyone else in the public that wants to speak on this specific?
No.
Thank you. Okay, so we, we need to have direction for our city manager on this one portion of this item.
So, Mr. Vice Mayor, I'd like to move that this remain as one of the priorities for the first round.
So would that be a, okay. So that'd be Joe Paula for the first, and Gus Walter for the second. I don't know if it's an act, action item, it's just needs to give direction. So do you want a roll call on this?
It is fine to, that way for the minutes, we could get the, the votes.
Perfect, then, Yvonne, can we get a roll call on this with the four of us?
Yes, um, Vice Mayor Lance?
Aye.
Councilmember Backby?
No.
No.
Councilmember Paula?
Yes.
Councilmember Walters?
Yes.
Three to one.
Thank you, Yvonne, and thank you. Uh, we will ask the, I'm sorry?
I, I'd love to stand up and go get our five.
You know what, if you guys don't mind, let's take a five-minute break, so that we can do whatever we need to do and come back, uh, at 8:31, please.
Recording in progress.
And we are going to item G2, which is Call Ray Road Resolution. David, would you fill us on in that?
Madam Mayor, we, we have, we only completed discussion.
Oh, that's right.
On item G1.
Oh, no, the question continues.
Related to, uh, funding for the Alexander Valley Healthcare.
Okay.
Which was the item that you recused yourself on. Um, so long as going forward, we, we don't address, the council doesn't address that. Uh, Mayor Cruz no longer has to recuse herself on the other, um, uh, funding items that are up for consideration, discussion by council, uh, unless you otherwise see, you know, a, a separate independent financial conflict there. So I think where, where we left this, um, discussion was, you know, council supported the item under water sewer broadband, identifying $250,000 for, uh, storm drain work at Times What that does is leave for fiscal year, for the current fiscal year, uh, approximately $750,000 for council consideration, and then another million dollars, which I would see, uh, you, you could plan, uh, for allocation in next fiscal year, '22, '23. But you could certainly, eh, give direction and, and, um, identify, you know, what your key priority, priorities are for utilizing ARPA funds for. I did want to just take a moment, I think, uh, Councilmember Walter did ask a couple of pertinent questions, I think, relative to, uh, the, the funding items on the list, and, uh, kind of the question was, you know, why are some of these items on, on there? Is that a fair, fair, fair question, Councilmember?
If I may, Madam Mayor.
Sure.
Um, yes, actually, David, thank you. I, I'm just wondering why we're taking the Chamber contract of $75,000 and the Senior Center contract of $15,000 out of this pool of money when it was approved by the general fund? And, and what I'm asking for is, um, $1,035,000 and subtracting everything that we're using it for, and I don't think we should be deducting $75,000 in the Chamber and $15,000 in the Senior Center. So that's, was my question, basically.
Gotcha. Thank, thank you, Councilmember Walter, for, for your question. I think it was also kind of a policy statement about the use of the funds. Um, I, I think to answer your, your question, um, is that's an eligible use of the funds as, that we've identified. I think, you know, again, it's a policy direction. If council doesn't want to offset those general fund expenditures with ARPA funds, that's, that's a policy direction that you can provide to us, and you can allocate or request those funds be directed elsewhere. But you could look at it from a, a, a one perspective. You could utilize the American Rescue Funds to cover the expense, those general fund expenditures. And, and of course, what that's, what, you know, the, the outcome of that is it's going to benefit your general fund, uh, uh, unencumbered balance. It then provides more funding within your general fund that you then have some opportunity to allocate as you see fit. So there's a constraint with respect to using ARPA funds, but as council knows, you can use general funds for whatever you purpose, you see fit. So, of, of course, uh, the general fund is something I, I recommend council protect and, and seek ways to bolster, uh, because it's, you know, it's always under threat. Um, and, and that was, uh, staff's way of, of trying to, to address, uh, you know, general fund expenditures for eligible purposes that you could offset. Again, council's direction, if, if you prefer not to offset the general fund, you don't have to do that, uh, it, it, with those eligible expenses. Uh, but, but even then, if you, if, if you wanted to direct the funds and then be able to free those funds up for other, uh, purposes for which you have more flexibility, this provides an opportunity for you to do that. But that, again, that's a policy direction for, for council.
I mean, I could, I, I could see the one-time bonus that we paid the staff. I mean, that was for their hard work during the situation. Um, but these other ones, these other two in particular, that's $90,000, one-shot money that we could use on another task that we have here. I mean, this was already allocated in the general fund, and, and it's kind of like we're repainting ourselves for an annual expense. So, I, I just don't know how everybody else feels about that.
Well, you know, I see it as a reimbursement, because, you know, the use of the, uh, American Rescue Plan is very limited, and this is directly related to COVID.
No, it's not.
Yes, because the $75,000 was for precisely Clover Ready.
I thought it was for the Chamber.
No, the Chamber is overseeing it.
It says budgeted figure, and the same with the Senior Center.
Yes, and.
So in addition to what we've already contracted with them, they're getting another.
No, 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 we're getting it as a reimbursement, correct, David? I mean, that's how I understood it.
That, that, again, we, we identified that, that, on this matrix, as an opportunity for council to, to offset those expenditures in the general fund. They're really actually, uh, if we tally it up in total to the Chamber, uh, between Clover Ready and the, and the annual funding agreement, it's actually $125,000. So, you know, 50 for Clover Ready, uh, and then 75, a portion of which i- is, and I'm sure Nina would, would support this, the statement, that i- is her work, um, addressing the COVID response, as you know, during, during COVID, uh, and, and ongoing, uh, the Chambers played a critical role in providing out, business outreach services, uh, to, to our business community related to COVID, you know, information, documentation, signage, and so forth. So, again, that's why we identified the. So again, that's why we identified the expense here. And we'll take your direction, council, on however you think it's appropriate. If you want to direct those funds to a water CIP or another project or appropriate funding source, we certainly will take that feedback and reflect that in the budget. You know, again, this is for your consideration.
I just think that with or without the COVID, we would have spent that money on the chamber. But you're going to have to draw me a picture and some sticks or some flow chart to figure that out. But I hear what you're saying. There was a lot of extra work done by the chamber and by the senior center to get us through this. And I do appreciate it. I'm just not sure that it should come out of this one-time money. But that's up to council.
It's up to the guidelines, but Joe?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, I fully agree with Councilmember Walter. I really think if there's... We really need to look at what's most important with this one-time money. I don't think we should remove these off the list. I just don't think we should authorize at this time refunding them. Maybe in the second cycle, after we go through the CIP and we decide if there's money left, take a look at that again. But, you know, I'm looking at a couple of things like the broadband. You know, as I have here from... The governor just signed AB 14 and SB 4, $6 billion in money that has not been determined how it's going to be allocated, though we know it's going to be competitive. But the goal of this money is for broadband for every city to have capability for broadband. So I would just not support funding that out of this one-time money, at least yet. Maybe next year, if this doesn't materialize, we may revisit that with the next allotment. But it'd be foolish to spend that money and then have this money available that we wouldn't be able to take advantage of. And the second thing is on the audio/video upgrades. Several years ago, we passed the PEG funding ordinance, which is designed to bring in the monies to service the audio videos and all that. And that's still in place. So I would like to know maybe if we could take a look and if we don't have money in the bank to take a loan from one of our enterprises with the $30,000 and using PEG funding, which specifically has to be used for this purpose, to repay that loan back. So there's alternative ways, rather than, I think, using the art money, to look at getting these things in place and keep this money for those really important, critical projects that we're going to hear about when Darren speaks.
David, I have a question. If we don't use this money allocated, does it get lost? Does it go back?
Well, I'm not informed enough on the final rule, whether we would have to return it. There are guidelines for reporting it. We do have to use it by a certain time. So if we don't, you know, there could be the potential that we, you know, funds that are unutilized, we may have to return. So, you know, that's something that I think, you know, we have to look very closely at the final guidelines. And Susie, is there any... In your review of the guidelines, is there any guidance that you can provide feedback to the mayor and council on?
Yes, we have until 2024 to encumber the funds. We have until 2026 to spend the funds. But if we have not encumbered and/or spent them by the end of 2026, then the funds have to be sent back.
Okay, so I have another question. Do we have an estimate of what is the total cost for broadband and upgrading Wi-Fi in Cloverdale for our purposes?
The cost that's reflected in the matrix is the cost estimate we received from Sonic to provide fiber to City Hall, the police department and our corporation yard. We did not attain a proposal to provide citywide Wi-Fi services. So, you know, that would be a much more expensive endeavor. But we certainly could seek additional proposals for expanding, you know, Wi-Fi throughout the city. You know, it would likely be a service contract that, you know, we'd have to pay for because, you know, much like internet, internet services is an ongoing expense. Whereas what we've reflected here is largely the capital cost of installing the fiber at those facilities. And just to speak a moment to what staff has identified as justification for that, we've had experience, you know, really starting with the Kincaid Fire, well, starting earlier with the Tubbs Pocket Fire and even the Kincaid Fire, where we were without internet services at City Hall and the police department, which affected operations. We have an ongoing operational issue at our corp yard, where our internet, which is provided by a particular service provider, routinely fails. And it impacts our ability to provide ongoing operations. We have staff that don't have connectivity to our server. And there's a whole host of improvements that are needed at our corp yard that rely on broadband services, including our SCADA systems. But there's a whole host of other types of what I call mission-critical services that are... Where broadband is needed to support those. And there's a tremendous amount of flexibility with utilizing these funds to be able to get that project done sooner rather than later and build in also that redundancy. So that's why we identified that under this ARPA funding matrix.
But this is just kind of a beginning expense because it would be much more to really be... To catch up, especially with SCADA, which we really don't have.
Right. SCADA, as we've seen, you know, is a fairly significant endeavor to upgrade. We could, you know, that's certainly an eligible item, I think, that, you know, we could look at if council so directed. Is, you know, what's the cost to upgrade SCADA at both our... There's a need at our water treatment plant as well as our wastewater system to upgrade SCADA. So, you know, it's something that we could certainly address if that's the interest of council. But this is kind of foundational infrastructure that's needed to, again, support existing operations and also address a lot of future improvements that are reliant upon that, on broadband technology.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
Also, Madam Mayor.
Yes, yes.
David, could you just explain to us under economic impacts, office staff? It's about $251,000. And it says to staff to pre-pandemic levels. What do we mean there?
Yeah. Susie, if you can address Councilmember Walter's question.
Sure, I can. One of the uses of the funds is to staff your... Is to get your staffing level up to your pre-pandemic level. We were missing staff in the finance office in City Hall. And since we can use these funds for that, I did put it in there just so that we could have a use for reimbursing.
Why would we want to do that, though? I don't understand why we're paying ourselves back for something that's a normal expense.
Well, um...
It's not like we're going to be going out and hiring more people, are we?
Yes. Well, I'm planning to replace the person that we have, a contract employee right now. But we do need to fill the position back to pre-pandemic staff.
I just think, once again, that's an expense that should come out of our general fund normally.
And there are two thought levels. And one is reimburse your general fund for any of the, you know, the additional expenses or the revenue that you lost, which is what most cities that are able to are doing. That's going to be their first thing is let's make our...
And I can understand it if we were talking bed tax, TOT tax, and we were at $100,000 pre-pandemic and then we went through the pandemic and we were only doing $25,000. I can understand giving us an extra $75,000. That's lost income directly related to people not traveling. But when it comes to things like this, I'm not so sure I'm comfortable with them.
But we have... So could you explain that a little further, Susie? Right now, we just have somebody who is not an employee.
That's correct.
Is just a contracted employee temporarily.
Right.
And prior to pandemic, we had a person in that position. And that's what this money would be for.
That's correct, to staff back.
And this is based on the guidelines given by the federal government.
Those are acceptable...
Acceptable expenses.
Uses of the funds.
And once again, we need to keep that in mind because...
$251,000?
$251,000? No, it's not $251,000.
It's over a three-year period.
Yeah.
It's over a three-year period. So... But what I'm saying is, you know, we have to be very careful in what the guidelines are. Once the guidelines are there, we cannot use the money for anything else other than what guidelines are. So that... This is apparently something that falls within those guidelines. And we need to take into account what the guidelines are.
And I'm not disagreeing that they don't fall within that guideline. I'm just saying, should we be reimbursing ourselves like that? Or should we be putting in another storm drain somewhere in the city, a one-time expense?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with Councilmember Walter because I look at these items and I see things that are not... Even though they're on a list, they're not technically COVID-related or going to affect the public in a different way. With this one, you know, I look at things like the chamber agreement, senior center. There's certain things like your Clover Ready, your resilient Clover, all the things that I would look for to reimburse us for because that is specific towards safety for Cloverdale, for the entire town. When I look at office staff, I see ongoing costs. I don't see a one-time thing here. And that's what I have a problem with, with that exact line item. Even though it can be covered, it is something that we would be paying for. We didn't pay for, so we should have money in the general fund that we already saved. And now we're going to go forward and try to reimburse ourselves again to put more money back into the general fund to spend how we choose to with that versus using, you know, this money here for that. We're kind of circumventing a system that they're allowing us to do, to put more money into our general fund to spend on other things, when I'd rather spend it on something that is more specific towards one-time money like our CIPs.
But we do need a staff person.
And we have a general fund for that. And we need to live within our means when it comes to our ongoing costs. That's how I feel about that one.
Do we have to decide this tonight, Madam Mayor?
No, we can revisit this. Did you have a comment, Joe?
No, I just want to say I agree with Vice Mayor Lands. You know, I know it's an allowable use. I'm just not sure with the small amount of money we have, it's a smart use. And I think we need to be focused primarily, just like we did when we had redevelopment, on things that are going to move the city forward. Put us in a position to serve the residents of this community over the next 10, 15, 20 years. Because one-time money goes. And if you put it for staff, it's... One-time money doesn't fund it the next year. So you've got to have new money to continue the position or you end up laid off. So I... And when I say staff, new staff, not currently budgeted positions. So I just think we really should be focused on the CIP. That's huge, water. I know we have some dire needs in that area. And I think we should try to carve out as much of this money to address that problem. So...
Well, I definitely agree on all that you're saying. However, we have more demands on staff and we keep having less and less staff. So we need to keep that in mind in terms of how much output can we have in terms of completing the tasks and the jobs that we have to do, not only for the public but for ourselves. And, you know, I definitely agree with all of the water situations. I have circle here myself, you know, source capacity, wells, water main replacement. That's essential for me. This money really needs to be spent because this is going to guarantee our safety of... Our water safety and our service-providing opportunity to the town. This is definitely a must. But at the same time, we need to keep in mind that we are facing very many new situations that cannot be met with the new demands. Things that never happened in the past, COVID, fires, drought, compliance with zero waste and in terms of 1383. You know, compliance with all the environmental mandates that are imposed, imposed on us. And we don't have the staff... We really don't have the staff to keep up with all these five additional demands and everything else that has been done traditionally. So right now, the burden is very, very heavy on every person at the office. We still need to have the city clerk, and I do understand that. You know, my priority is definitely water and sewer, definitely. But we also need to keep in mind the human resources that we are lacking at this moment. So, you know, I don't... I just want you to keep this in mind. And I hope that we can spend all the money and that we don't have to return one cent. But we need to be very judicious on how we see the guidelines and how we comply with those guidelines and how we also meet the immediate needs that our town has. So we have discussed office staff, chamber, senior, broadband, water. I guess we're discussing water right now somewhat. So should we open to the public?
I just want to make one comment. Again, I don't disagree with you. We do need more staff. That's certainly not the topic. But this particular money would not hire additional people. This would reimburse the existing people, physicians. So you just... You don't use one-time money and hire people because the money goes away in a year. And so I just wanted to clarify that. I think we should hire more staff based on what the general fund will support and that was approved in the budget. This money wouldn't be for that. This would just reimburse the staff that we have already approved. So...
It says to staff to pre-pandemic levels, meaning that we don't have one staff right now that we had before.
But what I'm saying is, if physicians are approved already and they can hire, they're hired. It has nothing to do with this money.
No, no, it does because in the guidelines it says to staff to pre-pandemic levels. So she's not inventing it. It is true that this is a guideline. Perhaps we need to look an additional place to put the money and not look at the staff. Yes, go ahead.
Well, I think we're faced with what you'd call and what the other cities around us would call a wonderful problem because we're arguing about what to do with our extra money. And clearly, you know, what these guidelines are intended to do is help cities who have taken a big financial hit on their bottom lines because of COVID and to help them get back to pre-pandemic levels. And what we're saying is that we actually have the money in our general fund. And the reason we have the money in our general fund is that we are so dependent on property taxes. Other cities, for their services, are dependent on transit-oriented, you know, or TOT or, you know, sales tax and things like that. We are, as strapped as we are, we're actually more stable. So this is a wonderful problem for us to have. And so I guess, you know, I think what I heard the question being is this, we're kind of just giving... We're clearly giving policy direction on which, you know, what we like and what we don't like. I like having, maintaining the flexibility that even if we did have the money in our general fund for headcount or for other things, I like the flexibility policy-wise of being able to say, well, gee, next year, you know, we don't know what would happen. And when we would have the ability to backfill with these funds. So I just, going forward, I think it's great to go ahead and say, you know, I kind of favor using it in this direction. I, you know, I do in favor, do favor possibly backfilling or not favor. I personally like the flexibility of being able to say, oh, hey, this is this federal money that has very specific uses that we can apply to it. And if we apply it to something we already have in the general fund, that frees up that money to spend it however we want to. So I kind of am in favor of maintaining... So I kind of am in favor of maintaining the flexibility. And I'd like to hear from the public as to what they think their values are or, and, you know, where they'd like to, you know, see us invest. Because again, it's, it's a very limited amount of money. It's one-time money. And I think that it needs, personally, I think it needs to be invested in places where it's going to, you know, you're accelerate. It's, you're going to get a lot of bang for your buck. You're going to get a lot of, you're going to be able to leverage it because you're not going to be able to get that, you're not going to, it's going to be harder to find that money, you know, from another source. So I'd be, I'd be interested in hearing Nina's contribution and, and anybody else as to what they think the priority areas should be. And, you know, I have some doubts about some of the items that are on the list. I'd certainly like to see some, some other, I'd still like to see us make contributions to, you know, some other areas. But I'd like to hear what the public have to say.
Well, I, I would like to have Darren come and give us his perspective because he's been here since very early and he has to be at the plant tomorrow. So.
Honorable Mayor and council members, I'm here tonight to basically answer any questions or, you know, describe the process that we utilize to come up with these CIP projects, how we prioritize, maybe even talk to you a little bit about how our perspectives have grown over the year since we, you know, did these CIP projects and prioritized these and the experiences that have grown our perspective such as drought. And so that you can understand these projects, what they entail, why they're mandates and why they're necessary and, and answer any of your questions that you may have. So over this last year, we had this drought. It's caused a lot of refocusing in the water department. Historically, and, and Joe and, and Gus, you guys have been, been here a long time and you know historically, source water capacity. I used to come up here and I'd say, source water capacity, source water capacity, source water capacity. Although source water capacity is still a very, you know, a very high priority. With the drought, we've learned that, you know, we, we don't want to now just go drill more wells. We don't want to drill wells that can be, you know, curtailed. We don't want to have wells that are under direct influence of the river. We need to look at groundwater wells that aren't, that aren't susceptible to that curtailment. We need to, we need to change our approach to our source capacity and, and the way that we're going to achieve that. So source capacity for these dollars, being that these dollars are, are this year, next year, really to drill new well, it's going to, and, and to do that as, as, you know, good as possible and, and secure that money and make it the biggest bang for its buck with source capacity, we really need to refocus and master plan our, our, our source capacity efforts and make sure that we're, we're going after those groundwater wells, have the hydrogeological information and, and make those determinations, you know, based on the scientific data. So that's one of the reasons why you don't see source capacity on the list there as high up as you see, say, the meter project, right? So the meter project, the reason the meter project is, is, is higher up and kind of on this list here is because we are currently taking a small amount of budget relative to the large size of the project. And we're taking bites out of this project every year. And it's going to take up to ten years at this rate to get this project completed. The drought has taught us that our data and our data streams are extremely important. The, the, the more accurate data and the more timely data we have, the more accurate and more timely we can complete our compliance reporting with our regulatory agencies. A full radio read metering system for our customers benefits the city tremendously in manpower. It reduces the amount of manpower we have to put out there to read meters. It increases the accuracy of the data because now we can have data from the first of the month to the thirtieth of the month, rather than we read the meter on the seventh of the month here and then the meter reader didn't get it back around through the routes till the tenth of the month here. And we have these, these little inconsistencies in data. The other thing that radio reads would do if we were to do the whole system, and it's a large chunk of money, but to do the whole system, not only can the city have real-time data to help find leaks and helps solve leak issues at an earlier time, but the residents can have a portal and have real-time data. The residents can be more informed on their conservation efforts and, and can buy into the conservation. They can graph their own usage. They can have all these tools that modern radio read systems offer their customers. The other thing is, is that we have a large amount of old meter stock in the ground. Meters only have approximately a twenty-year life. Meters always slow down, they don't speed up. Every old meter has lost revenue going into our coffers every year. If it takes ten years to complete our meter, meter retrofit project, that's ten years that we continue to lose revenue on those meters. That revenue can then go towards some of these other projects and go fund some of these other endeavors of the water department. So that's why we've placed the meter reading, or the, the meter retrofit project as a whole on here for consideration is because it is a big one-time project. It's a project that will take current staff and current budgets a decade to complete otherwise. And it has a multitude of benefits, both for our constituents, our residents, you know, our customers and for the city. The other thing that we talked about as a high priority project that would fit up here as well is the Cherry Creek tank replacement. You know, I'm, I'm quite frankly, really happy to see how passionate our council is about our water system. I've been passionate about it for twenty years myself. So, you know, it, these projects on the CIP list have been drilled down to and, and re-timed and, and budgeted and, and been looked into for years. Cherry Creek tank has been the can that's been kicked down the road for decades. And Cherry Creek tank doesn't meet seismic design. It, it's our oldest steel tank that we have. It has the highest amount of corrosion in it. It is an Achilles' heel in our distribution system. That's why on the CIP projects, it's placed first. Also, it was a kind of a, a project we felt we could feasibly get done in those first couple of years when the, the, the rate studies just coming into effect and the, and the budgeting dollars aren't, aren't there to do some of the bigger projects such as the chlorine contact tank, the second chlorine contact tank. But it's also a timing thing because of the corrosion and because of the age of that piece of infrastructure. That's why it's placed in that priority on the CIP project. But for these dollars and these one-time dollars, I think the meter replacement project, although it takes a big chunk of that money, is a very good project to identify for monies like this. I'm happy to answer questions on any of the CIP projects. I'm happy to talk about SCADA and broadband. If, if you have questions on those two topics as well, I'm, I'm here to help inform you and answer your questions so that you guys can make the best decisions you can.
Just have a quick question to follow up on what you just said. You said that the Cherry Creek reservoir is the Achilles of the system. Could you explain that?
The reason I say that it's an Achilles' heel in the system is because it's a weak point in the system for water quality. So as the, as the infrastructure, as the tank continues to corrode, those corrosion levels will at some point start to affect water quality. And as you know, one of our top things in water department is quantity, quality, right? So when water quality gets affected, it affects every resident and that is zone one. So it affects every resident in the city because the other two zones pull out of zone one. Zone two and zone three pull water from zone one, pump it higher to make higher pressure zones. All the water in this city goes into zone one first and then goes from there. If you affect water quality in zone one, it affects water qualities. It has the potential to affect water quality citywide.
Thank you.
Darren, how, the estimate for doing the repairs to the Ritter tank.
Uh, Ritter?
I mean Cherry Creek.
Mm-hmm.
Am I reading that right? It's one point two?
Mm-hmm.
Is that a current number?
Okay, so those numbers, so those numbers were, they're a little aged. The CIP project has been, the CIP has been in development and seen multiple revisions. So they're a little aged. They are, they are new enough for planning purposes, for a high-level planning purposes such as David spoke about earlier. But as far as an engineering estimate, they're not accurate enough to say that they're an engineering estimate and that would be the exact cost. But also with that project, we have done some of the preliminary groundwork, some of the geotech things we've put in our normal annual budget and have done some of the, the preliminary foundational work for that project, knowing that it was one of the first CIP projects to, to be done. So.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just, quick question. If the Cherry Creek tank failed, tell me what that does to the system. What, how do we?
Okay, so Cherry Creek tank is a single tank site. We don't like single tank sites in, in water departments. That's the problem with the chlorine contact tank. When you have one tank, you can't take the tank out to maintain it. You can't take it out of service, you can't do the maintenance. What ends up happening is deferred maintenance ends up going on in those single tank sites. Today, if Cherry Creek tank started negatively affecting our water quality, we would valve that tank out of the system. Valving it out of the system could cause some transmission, water transmission issues to the south end of town because it's kind of in the middle. Our main reservoirs are over here on Vista View. Our other big zone one reservoirs are the, the Hot Springs tanks out Hot Springs Road. That Cherry Creek tank is kind of an important tank because it kind of buffers the middle of the system. And our zone one system has some of the highest demands on it. Much of, much of the large irrigators such as Washington School, City Park, you know, High School are all on that zone one system. So storage in that system is extremely important and that buffering capability for, to meet the demand slopes. So as your demand goes up, your pressures go down and, and you, you have a slope of demand. That tank is an important site because it buffers those. When we did the two thousand fifteen projects, the USDA loan-funded projects, Cherry Creek tank was identified for replacement during that time. We did not have the funds in that project because we ended up expanding our SCADA project at the water treatment plant to basically build a complete new SCADA system at the water treatment plant. And since that project got expanded, a project had to be cut. The operator, the, the, the senior plant operator at that time made the decision to cut the Cherry Creek tank out. And their, their decision was based because they would valve the tank out of the system once it was a water quality issue. As senior plant operator, I realize, currently, I realize how important that tank is because it is a buffering tank in the middle. We could valve it out of the system, we could live without it, quite frankly. But we would lose two hundred and sixty-seven thousand gallons of water storage in our zone one system. And with fire seasons and everything else, every gallon of water storage is, is, is important. But it's the physical location of that tank that makes it important being that it's in the middle between the other reservoirs in the zone and it has a buffering effect both ways.
Yes, go ahead.
Just one question. If you had your choice of new meters citywide or repairing that Cherry Creek tank, which one would you pick?
Well, with these one-time monies, I would go with the meters citywide. And the reason is this, the meters citywide are going to bolster our revenues by getting those old meter stock out of the ground. And that revenue bolstering will continue from the day that this project's done forward through the lifetime of those meters, approximately twenty years. And the money that we currently have budgeted for meter replacements annually could then be earmarked and expedite the Cherry Creek tank project that we already have on track to be done through the CIP in the next two years anyways. So we could kind of get the biggest bang for our buck by kind of doing that big project and getting it out of the way and then, you know, taking the money that was earmarked for that big project and side, putting it into the next big project, which would be Cherry Creek tank.
Who would install those meters? You and your crew?
Well, there's.
Would that be contracted out?
Well, the, the current, the current cost associated with that project, you know, we would have to see if we could have a crew come do it. The, the people we work with right now, Ferguson Water Works, where we get our Neptune meters and they've, they've set up our software, they could actually come and do the whole thing, start to finish and give us a cost and not impact city staff very much. You're going to have impacts because you're going to have impacts with coordinating it and, and working through those things. But as far as not physically putting the meters in, and whether or not we can fit that into the budget or not, that would be something that would be your guys' choices. But we have already retrofitted some meters. We have been throwing money at this program for a couple of years now. So the original cost estimate isn't accurate now because we've done some of the work. So originally, the cost to change out every single meter, put in radio repeaters on the telephone poles, put a radio receiver at City Hall that basically could poll those meters twelve times a day and send the information to a database at City Hall was about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And that was replacing all the meters that needed to be replaced and retrofitting the ones that just needed to be retrofitted. We do have a lot of newer meters in the ground that we're currently just retrofitting with new registers because it's much, much cheaper to retrofit those meters and they're still good meter stock. They're good for another ten years.
And how about supply and demand? You know, there's a big shortage on computer chips and all that. Any problem getting enough of those meters?
Now, when we went to, one of the reasons that we went to Neptune and we got away from the Badger meter when we did it was because Badger kept changing the software and kept changing the, the, the registers because they had to keep changing and updating their software and computer chips inside those registers and their radio frequencies. Badger meters have been using the same ones for decades and they have designed their future meters to still work on those same ones. So they have an overstock of those, those items in the Neptune, in the Neptune brand versus the Badger, which was changing on us constantly and we always happened to upgrade our reading, meter reading equipment.
Thank you.
Before, how many hours, people hours, you would save with the meters?
Well, just on the meter reader alone, the meter reader alone spends at least five to eight days reading meters. And that's five to eight days every single month, reading meters. And so you're going to save that meter reading time. The time you're not going to save is you're not going to save the meter maintenance time. The meter reader is still going to have to go out and lift the meter lids and make sure that the meters aren't buried and that the curb stop valves are still accessible because you can't defer that maintenance and then have a water leak and not be able to shut it off.
But it will not be for.
But he wouldn't be reading the meters. That, that time would be gone. I went to a, I went to a symposium about this a couple of years ago. And it was when the city of Novato had just switched over to full radio read and they had contractors come in and just get it done. And they thought, their meter readers actually thought, oh, man, we're going to be out of work. We're not going to have a job anymore. And it actually turned out to not be the case because now the meter reader was, the meter readers are much more focused on customer service because with that real-time portal, customers start looking at their water uses and they have questions and they have concerns and they find in leaks. And so you find, the meter reader found that, that they were using their time in a customer service fashion rather than actually physically reading the meters.
Okay, thanks. Melanie?
Darren, I wonder if you, you might have to take a guess at this. You know, if you had these radio-controlled meter readers that gave real-time feedback, how much water do you think we'd save, like on a monthly or probably an annual basis? Or a. basis, or a, you know, a drought month or something like that? And then what do you think that translates into for energy costs as well? Because so much of the, the, the cost of operating the system is, is moving the water around, or, and processing the water. So just what, do you, do you have an idea of what that might be in a city our size?
Sure. Um, you know, our, our water loss, if you look at our TAP reports and you look at all of our, all of our, uh, reporting, our water loss from what's put into the distribution system at the water treatment plant, and then what's actually billed for, that water loss ranges and is really hard to, to quantify, because you have a fire one weekend, and you've got a bunch of fire trucks filling up out of hydrants, and that all looks like water loss, right? Because it's un-metered. But typically, about 10 to 12% is, is, is actual water loss that's lost leaking somewhere, or going through a meter and not getting registered, because the meter's too old and it's running too slow. So these meters, after 20 years, they can be 10% off, 15% off. Well, when, if, when you look at a, a, a city our size with, you know, over 3,000 connections, I mean, if those connections are just on average $100 a month, and it's $10 off, that, that adds up to big money real fast. But the other thing is, is these slower meters, they, they also don't have the homeowner, they don't, they don't lend, they don't push the homeowner to conserve, because the homeowner might only be using 12 units of water, and they think that's okay. But if their meter wasn't running slow, they might be registering 16 units of water, and they might be alarmed. And, and it's really hard with the, with the meters being manually read, for homeowners to really read their meters, or even to look for leaks. They have a hard time doing that. So what most cities are finding is when they transfer over to a full radio-read system with real-time user data, their leaks are, are, are really minimalized, and they see a large drop in water loss. So, I mean, if you're looking at 10 or 12% water loss, you can look at the bills of the water treatment plant. I don't know exactly what the PG&E bill is a month, but I know it's tens of thousands. And if you've got 10% less water being pumped, you're going to have 10% less power.
Okay.
It's, it's, it's exponential. Okay.
Yeah, do you have a question?
No.
Okay. So, water meters, sounds very, very strong, and, and Cherry Creek, first of all. What else would you recommend?
Well, I think every, everything on this list is, is a priority.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
From a reason, from one point or another.
In terms of, in terms of timing, because, you know, I see that 2022, you're saying source capacity and Cherry Creek. And then 2023, um, well, the WTP well, and then we have water main replacement, which to me is a very important one.
Absolutely.
So, uh, just quickly, because it's already 9 o'clock.
So real quickly, the, the well replacements and the well reconstructions and the source capacity, I touched on that briefly earlier, that I think that as a city, we need to remaster-plan that, and look at how it plays into with, with the new environment, with curtailment orders. And, and we need to address those, um, with a new focus. So not looking at those, but looking at water main replacement. Water main replacement is definitely needed. We have a lot of old water mains. The problem is, it's very expensive. And generally, when you re-replace the water mains, you replace the sewer, and you resurface the streets at the same time. So it gets exponentially expensive to do that. We do have some water mains earmarked, some small water mains, that are not in the street, that would be the next thing that we would start wanting to target.
Okay, thank you. I think we have a hand in the, in the public. Nina, is that old or is that new? Nina? Did you fall asleep?
Kinda. Super interesting, and.
All that water talk, I'm really excited about water talk anyway, so go ahead.
Priority one is water, and how that helps our ratepayers and our, the people moving into town, our new businesses. And if there was any way to possibly allocate a, a, a small percentage of money to businesses that were not able to get funding through the pandemic from either state, federal, or county grants and resources. That's it.
Thank you. Any other hands?
And I, and I'm happy to answer any questions. I'm very tired.
Are we all?
Sorry, Nina.
That's okay.
Okay, so, um, no other hands, correct? Any other questions for Darren? Okay, Darren, thank you very much. I love going to the plants, because you always give such thorough explanations. As you all know, I went through a water training, uh, last year, and it's been greater and greater every time. Okay, so we don't have to make a decision on this today?
Madam Mayor, we do have to give a direction.
Yes.
And if, if you don't mind, let me try and see if I hear everybody's points. It sounds like our, our group unanimously says water, sewer, broadband, and the public health portion is the most important before the others. And if I'm wrong, you can, you can obviously change. But I think that if we pointed our city in a direction to start with those, and look at those, those ideas first, and then go into the other ones after that, might be a, a direction to go, and not take anything off of a list. Everything's up in the air still, however, leave it at that, that we prioritize those two categories more than anything else.
Gracias, then, Melanie.
And I'd still like to meet with staff, either David or Kevin, and just review the economic impact. I'm looking at $347,000, um, that I'm having a problem getting my arms around, that they should actually be sitting on this piece of paper. And I just need to have that explained to me. Thank you.
Okay.
You need a diagram.
Yeah.
Yes. You know you like your fixtures. Hey, it's important. So I'm, I, I, the risk of, um, just, just to sum up, I guess what, what I would like to see is, I, I don't have a huge problem with, um, possibly, you know, backfilling money that we already have in the general fund, and then being able to use the general fund monies for other things. My priority, though, um, I, I don't have a, a major problem with, with what I'm seeing on this spreadsheet, except for the, the one item. And, and I think that infrastructure, um, is key in this city. So I, I would like to, I'd like to see staff come back with, um, a way that we can leverage some of these funds, especially for the, the ma, the, the meter-radio-read upgrade. I mean, clearly, that's what's going to put us, that's the best use of the money, to invest it, to pay us the, the biggest dividend, so that we could actually, hopefully recruit some of the money that we're losing from slow meters and from leak, from, from leaks, so that we can get to these other things that are, and I, like specifically, that are in red, that are mandates. But, um, just, just some, also, I'm very, um, I would like to have some staff follow-up on one thing that Darren said specifically, which is kind of, I don't, everything's still, everything's still urgent, right? But, um, everything is still important, but some of our priorities need to be shifted in, in view of the drought, in view of the, the current drought, and the fact that, you know, we're, we're being told that the weather patterns that we're seeing are going to be more longer droughts, and then, um, you know, more atmospheric rivers and, and big water, water events. So I'd like to, I'd like staff to bring back, um, anything that needs to kind of be adjusted about how we, how we view this for, as an informational item. And then just lastly, again, I, I really appreciate the letter from, um, the Redwood Food Bank, and I'd like to entertain their, um, their ask, because when we needed them, not just during COVID, they've come through during, um, the fires as well. They made sure that people who are the most vulnerable in Cloverdale, um, who.
And the county.
And the county, but, but particularly in Cloverdale, I, I think that it, it, we should make a contribution to Redwood Empire Food Bank as well, as a, as a consideration, because they have really been there for this community. So that's, that, that, and I'd be happy to revisit, revisit the list, but again, I, I just think that any priorities for spending on infrastructure, um, the SIP should be visited first. That's, that's my priority.
And, you know, we will get some infrastructure money down the road with the new presidential allocations. However, uh, they're, this, yeah, it's, it's like the broadband, hopefully, uh, you know, uh, we need it as soon as possible, and there are certain things that we need to do to keep our work town going on. Since we're going to revisit this again, I would like to request the public, from the public, to send us some, some feedback on what they feel, um, it's important for the town. We haven't, we haven't had the opportunity to receive feedback from the public, and it would be, it would be nice if we could get some of that. So, uh, in your weekly report and in your postings, David and Kevin, it would be nice if that could be a reminder to people that we are still contemplating the distribution and allocation of funding, uh, from this, uh, COVID opportunity. And we pretty much know where we're going, but it would be nice to hear, uh, the voices. Judge, do you have something else to say?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I certainly agree, you know, infrastructure's got to be our top priority, certainly, and as other ones should also try to be pieced in there. But the two things I do want to, I want to encourage staff to be prepared for is to move on the broadband funding when that opens up. It's going to open up pretty quick. I checked with the league, as I know Mayor Cruz did. Uh, I checked with them. To date, there is still no indication of how it's all going to come, but there's eight or $6 billion out there, and we want to be ready to just move. So we should be preparing all the justifications and all the different things, getting that laid out, because that's going to be part of the application packet. And I think we're going to stand a fairly good chance of getting some of the funding, if not all of it. So that's important. And the other thing I just wanted to mention, I'd like information on the audio/video systems, because we do have that PEG funding, and I'm thinking we could almost, and this would be illegal, you could check it, but we could borrow money to put the system in day one, and over the course of a year or two years, pay that back through the PEG funding, which is a dedicated fund, can't be used for anything else, has to be used for that purpose. So if you could just check into that, I'd like to get more information on that. Thank you.
Quickly.
You know, sorry, Darren made yet another throwaway comment that's, I thought was vitally important, and that was, um, the comment about that our, we run on data, this, this, this infrastructure. Traditionally, you know, we've had, um, analog water meters and people going by and, and gathering the meter data, and that is gone. We don't have the headcount, we don't have the, the budget. This, this, this piece of infrastructure runs on data, and I think that we need some additional information, um, from Darren and from engineering explaining, it's, okay, so, you know, if, if, if the radio meters would become, um, the highest priority, then what is the broadband internet, and what's the support that we'll need in order to utilize that, and get that information not only into Suzie's hands in real time, but into our, our ratepayers' hands in rail, in real time, so that we can help folks, um, so that we can help folks conserve water and energy. So I'd like to bring that back as, as, as an item as well. And also, if we're going to qualify for that broadband funding, um, perhaps some of that will qualify under, uh, you know, water, water-related infrastructure as well. So, um, but it's important to remember that these one-time funds, that, that we can spend on broadband or water, that's in our control. We will have to compete for that broadband funding. So I think that, um, the broadband, definitely to the corporate yard at the very least, should also be a priority, because it's going to be important, an important part of that technology rollout.
Okay. So Kevin and David, you have more to do, right?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, thanks for your feedback on the funding matrix. We, we, we hear your, your priorities, and, uh, we'll, uh, we'll, we'll adjust accordingly and, uh, bring, bring this back for further, further discussion.
And I'm sure that you'll be getting calls from each of us to clarify and to add and to discuss. Now, um, moving on to G2, which I was anxious to at 8 o'clock.
And, and City Manager David, I, I think that knowing the ideas and thoughts of our council, I could probably just make a motion right now, if you don't want to go through the whole spiel.
It's, it's your direction, Council?
I'd like to make a motion, uh, by title only, for the resolution.
And I'll second that motion.
So adopt a resolution urging the Surface Transportation Board to reject the application submitted on behalf of the North Coast Rail Company, LLC, and encourage the Surface Transportation Board to grant the request of the North Coast Rail Authority to railbank their rail line from Willets to Humboldt Bay.
Hold on, somebody second.
He did.
Oh, okay. So, uh, Vice Mayor Lance moved the item, and Councilmember Paula, second. Now we need a call.
And just for the record, maybe we could just check to see if there are any hands raised or any public comments.
Anybody want a call rolling through Sonoma County? Anyone?
No hand raise.
I used to get that for Christmas.
Thank you. Go ahead and call.
Okay, so, um, roll call for Mayor Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lance.
Aye.
Councilmember Backfield.
Aye.
She said aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Paula.
Aye.
And Councilmember Walton.
You know, before I cast my vote, I, I, I just want to say, part of me, um, I understand why we're opposing this. Um, I still think there's a need for the rail line to go all the way up to Eureka, not to haul coal, always.
Haul people.
To get these tractor trailers off the road, and that rail, uh, would have been vital. So I'm voting yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Completely agree.
Okay. So, uh, Subcommittee reports. I think, um, we discussed everything from the admin police already. And, um, anything else, council members?
I submitted my council report in writing. Did everybody get a copy?
Yes.
Okay, great.
I haven't submitted mine yet. You'll be in tomorrow morning.
Yes, we did, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and legislative reports. David?
Madam Mayor, members of council, including in your packet is a, a letter of support addressed to the board supervisors, uh, recommending that the board consider adoption of Laura's law. This, this is an item that came forward as a recommendation from your Homelessness Community Advisory Group. Just yesterday, the, the Homeless Community Advisory Group met, guided by both, um, the Chair, Vice Mayor, and, and Mayor, Vice Chair. And, and there was, uh, commentary that we'd also recommend, including this letter, to the County Mental Health Board Director, and, um, I was provided with that contact information today. And again, this, this is a, a letter of, of support to enact Laura's law, and there was considerable information, uh, about Laura's law, including in your packet. Happy to address if you'd like to discuss. But otherwise, the recommendation is to support the letter of recommendation to the board in support of Laura's law.
I'd like to express support.
Second question?
Yes?
Um, I'm just curious, uh, David, I'm not sure if you know, but why was it turned down the first time? At the meeting yesterday, I believe, um, one of the individuals stated that there wasn't support by a certain organization, and I'm just wondering why they wouldn't support it. Do you know, Ann?
I, I think it's a reflection of, that there is, uh, costs to implement Laura law to the, Laura's law to the county, that, uh, that, you know, the county would have to absorb, uh, but, but otherwise, that, the, the cost of addressing the issues related to not having Laura's law is borne by the cities, so, uh, and our law enforcement personnel. So it's, it's not a matter of that there's costs, it's kind of who bears the costs, and I think, uh, that, that, that's probably why there wasn't support by the Mental Health Board, is because it, it requires staffing and, and, and funding to, to fully implement the, the law at the county level.
Yeah, I think they were trying to make sure that they had the funding.
And the, the other reason I heard, and obviously I haven't gone to speak to the person that said, you know, really turn this down through the mental health. However, as it was told to me, is the other reason was because some people had a hard time taking away people's rights, or, or imposing medications onto somebody that doesn't want to do it.
to do it. And unfortunately, that population this relates to doesn't have the mental capacity to make that decision on their own. And that is why this law is enacted everywhere but here, basically.
And I, I just have to say, Mayor Cruz and Vice Mayor Lance, you're doing a wonderful job on that homeless staff board. You're making more progress on that this year than, than you've had in years, so keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, so you have direction that we approve that. City Manager? City Attorney?
Yeah, brief report. I wanted to share with council that, just a, a brief update on, on staff's efforts to work with Sonoma County Fire District and, and their fire fuels team to address vegetation management objectives at our Porterfield Creek open space. We, we are working on an agreement with, with Northern Sonoma County Fire District. There, there's some final elements that we, we need to complete that agreement. I will be working to bring that forward at your very next meeting for, for, you know, council approval because it exceeds my, my funding authority or signature authority because of the amount. But because of the urgency, I'm going to be working diligently to get that agreement done as quickly as possible. I did communicate with Chief, Chief Tuberville, who is the chief for the Northern Sonoma County Fire District, and he indicated that the current planned timeline for that work is, is really early November. And that's based on when they're, they're, they're available, their crews are available to, to initiate that work. So I think we'll, we'll be working fairly timely to bring that agreement forward and, and have them start that work. Hopefully, we'll, we'll get some moisture at some point to help offset and address, you know, the really dry environment up there. But it is a key and a high priority for staff and we, we anticipate being able to get that going pretty, pretty quickly. I know there's a real, real urgency from our residents with, within Clover Springs.
Joe?
Just, just a question on the scope of work, is it going to be actually raising, taking trees up or have taken all the dead vegetation that's laying on the ground along the trails?
It, it's, it's really a combination. I, and I don't want to suggest that I'm a fire, I understand fire science, but a, a lot of the work is limbing up a lot of what are called the ladder fuels and removal of some of the fire-prone shrubbery. I know there's, there's this perspective that some of the larger timbers that are down, you know, seem like a fire concern, but what, what I've heard is that that's less of a, a concern in terms of a wildfire event because while it's combustible material, it's, it's not that flashy material that's going to rise up very quickly and create a more significant fire hazard. So I think the focus is, is really thinning and limbing up and removing, you know, some of the, maybe some of the, the smaller trees.
The little Doug firs.
Yeah, the Douglas firs. But not necessarily the, the larger logs or trees. In areas where you've seen treatment, you, you'll often see they, they leave a lot of the larger, you know, logs, if you want to call them that, but, but remove all the flashy, you know, vegetation that can.
You call it a log and, you know, mushrooms and frogs and all kinds of critters call it home, so.
Right.
So they do leave that, they leave that in effort because it is, it is environment, but it's getting the, yeah, those, those dead leaves, the dug fur, you know, and, and also, you know, clearing the, the, yeah, the understory. So it's, but it, but they'll probably use different techniques and they'll use the ones that they find are appropriate for our terrain. And also, you know, that's, that's what, second growth up there? It was logged, you know, what, and the, when was the last time it was logged? Maybe the 60s, something like that, maybe earlier?
Well, you know, one of the things.
They'll get a specific treatment that's appropriate to the, to, to that terrain.
But Vice Mayor and I found out when we were working on, on the river, is that there are specific guidelines that the arborist, the biologist, and all the entities involved in this have to provide. And, and it's, it's crazy because you would think, oh, you just go ahead and cut this, that, the other. There are very strict guidelines that have to be followed. And we were very surprised about some of the things that we heard. And this time around, it was not permitted because of the involvement of all the agencies, Fish and Wildlife and the River Protection, the biologists and so on. So this time, in that area, it's going to be strictly by the fire chief.
I just wanted to ask because I walked that whole area and there's a lot of vegetation that's dead, that's down, just laying there. And it's close to residents all along the path. And it really, that, that was my major concern, is the stuff that's down. Certainly, I'm happy they're going to clean it up and, you know, cut back and reduce the, the spread of a fast-moving fire, but that dead vegetation really needs to be cleaned up.
So we'll, we'll know more from the fire department.
Give the fire.
And top fire. They, they are the ones who give the, the orders. Okay, so Jose, did you have something?
Nothing, nothing tonight.
Chief? Nothing? Okay, and Vice Mayor Lance and I are going to meet with David on Wednesday to plan for the next agenda, so make sure that any agenda items you want to include, please send them to him or to any of us or, or meet with him.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a suggestion of us receiving an update on the Cherry Creek project.
Okay.
I think we all know that was a very expensive project for the city. They're starting to go vertical now and I'd like an update on where we stand with funding and who are the players. And if we could just get an update on that, I think that'd be great.
And I also requested for future agenda that we get a, a status of the COVID situation in Cloverdale and in the 9425, 95425. I can never get that zip code together. Update. And, and also, we should have a student liaison, right?
We should.
In the next, in the next meeting.
I, I believe Kevin is working on that currently and it should be coming to us and hopefully we can have her hear it in the same meeting that she's accepted.
Okay. Any other comments or direction for council or for City Manager? Meeting is adjourned at 9:47. Thank you very much.